I called to order this special study session for the city of Emeryville. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Bowders.
Here.
Councilmember Donahue.
Here.
Councilmember Martinez.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Potts.
Here.
And Mayor Medina.
Here. Can we get an approval of the final agenda?
So moved. Second?
We've got a motion by Vice Mayor Potts, a second by Member Donahue. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Bowders.
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue.
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Potts.
Aye.
And Mayor Medina.
Aye. Any ex parte communications to report?
Talked to a couple of neighborhood cats.
Please use the microphone to report that.
I talked to a couple of neighborhood cats.
Hmm.
They're not happy about this.
There. Anyone else?
I have, for the last year and a half, been working with the Golden Gate Audubon Society and members of the bird advocacy welfare community on this item.
Any public comment for items not on the agenda? Seeing none, let's open up a study session. Item 6.1, Bird Safe Building Standards.
Good evening, councilmembers. Does each slide have a bird on it?
That would be a northern robin.
You didn't just make this up and I'd believe you.
That's true. You know it's a robin. Yeah.
So, this is a session...
We'd like to know in advance if all the birds pictured here are native to Emeryville.
These ones are. They're native to the Bay Area.
Thank you.
So, this is a session on Bird Safe Building Standards. First, a little background. Birds benefit people by controlling insects and rodents and pollinate plants and spread seeds, but their population has been declining since 1970. It's declined 29 percent. About a quarter of the birds in this country are on the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service list of concern. Bird glass collisions kill between 365 million and 988 million birds a year in the U.S. More than half of those are at low rises, 44 percent at residences, and less than 1% at high rises because there aren't as many high rises. But per building, it's 22 per low rise per year, two per residence, and 24 for high rise. This is preventable. Birds don't have the depth perception and contrast sensitivity we do, so they can't distinguish reflections from sky or see clear glass, and large facing panes of glass look like a clear pathway. They navigate at night using the Earth's magnetic field, and their sensors are in the retina and are deactivated by red light. They navigate toward the moon and stars, so the sky glow confuses them, and they fly toward the brightest light and land, and then in the daytime, they fly into a building. So, in the 1960s, picture windows became common, and then in the 1980s, glass buildings. By 2005, scientists had developed some data on birds flying into buildings, and a couple years later, Toronto adopted the first guidelines, and in 2011, the U.S. Green Building Council made a credit, and San Francisco adopted the first ordinance. Couple years later, Oakland adopted a building permit review measure, and the next year, Sunnyvale and Markham, Ontario developed design guidelines. In 2014, a study said that bird collisions happen on all building sizes, and then the American Bird Conservancy Guide said that all parts of the building pane sizes and locations had bird strikes. That year, San Jose adopted voluntary measures. The next year, there was a bird section in the new Richmond ordinance, and the Academy of Science found out that birds hit buildings in this area all year, and a lot of them are hummingbirds. And last year, Alameda adopted an ordinance, and Portland and Santa Cruz developed standards. Then this year, there was a Cal Green code section proposed, a voluntary section, and that study came out about the 29 percent decline, and Berkeley Committee has recommended an ordinance to its city council. Birds will not fly into glass if there are dots, horizontal lines, or some other sort of pattern that are spaced two inches apart vertically or four inches apart horizontally. Portland did a study of a couple of its buildings and found out that the treatment cost .03 percent to .05 percent of the project cost, which is about $50 for $100,000. The treatments add about 5 percent to the cost of the glass. A lot of bird safe products are made here now, so they don't cost as much as they used to, and glass costs more than concrete and steel, so reducing the amount of glass can actually save costs. Bird safe measures reduce heating and cooling costs, and buildings with more than 30 percent glass have high heating and cooling costs. The San Francisco AIA, American Institute of Architects, initially opposed San Francisco's ordinance, but they came around and supported it. So, some examples. To the left, you see some parachute cord four inches apart, and to the right, you see tape. The tape or the string or whatever has to be on the outside so that reflections don't cover it up. These are ceramic dots. You can see they don't show very much against sky, but they do show against a dark landscape. And on the left, you see some stripes and some faux etching. This whole building's glass was replaced, and it looks like it's clear from a distance, but it has little dots when you're close up. You've seen advertising wraps like that. Or you can have digital printing just so it meets those dimensions. Balconies and sunshades and some other things will shade the glass, which can reduce reflections, but both these buildings also have a glass treatment. So, we looked at 12 other jurisdictions' standards, and I added up how many jurisdictions chose which standards. So, in terms of type of document, seven have an ordinance, four have voluntary measures, four have design guidelines, and one has a bonus option. Most of them apply to all buildings, four apply to certain residential buildings, one to multifamily, and the Cal Green proposal does not apply to residential buildings. Earlier in these ordinances, they would tend to apply to the lower 40 or 60 feet of the building. The more recent ones mostly are all of the building, and almost all of them are all building heights. 10 are citywide, and six of the earlier ones mostly are near open space. In Emeryville, if we used 300 feet from a two-acre open space, it would apply along the shoreline and around the Shore of Williams site in the Horton Landing Park. And if we had a one-acre open space, it would also apply around Doyle Hollis Park, Stanford Avenue Park, Timbskull Creek Park, and Pixar. What different jurisdictions are requiring are visual markers and muting reflections. The markers are frit, that's the ceramic, stencil, art, etching, film, screens, netting, following the two-by-four rule, and a lot of them use ultraviolet patterns, but hummingbirds and raptors can't see ultraviolet very well. So, that's why a couple of them say that's secondary. Five of them say you can use mullions, grates, louvers, angled glass, overhangs, two with qualifiers, one with biologists' approval, and you can see on the right why that is, because in some cases, that still reflects. And eight say you should apply this to freestanding glass. That would be like wind walls, balcony railings, things like that, that are just glass. And half of those say if the panes of glass are 24 square feet, and others don't say that. In terms of indoor lighting, eight of them say that the lights should be turned off either by timers or sensors or by action, and of course, we prefer to have it something that can be built into the building rather than trying to monitor the occupants. Four call for blinds, curtains, or shades as part of the building. Five focus on the migration periods, but seven say all year. Outdoor lighting, five of them say no spotlights, searchlights, beams, floodlights, or lasers, and a couple of them focus on lighting on architectural features. Most, six of them say not to have landscaping near clear glass, that's on the inside, or reflective glass on the outside, and I say put all the landscaping any want and just treat the glass. A lot of them, a couple of them say no mirrors, and one reminds us to make the vent grates follow that rule, too. So, what should Emeryville do? We could have voluntary measures. We'd have to persuade people, but it could be an option for density bonus. We could rely on SEQA, which does not specifically address this. We could make it part of the standard project conditions of approval. Of course, it would only apply to conditional use, conditional pyramids, conditional approvals. We could put it in the design guidelines, then it would only apply to things that need design review. The difference between design guidelines and having the standards all in the ordinance is that the staff has flexibility, if the spirit of the guidelines is met, to still recommend approval. We could have an ordinance amending the planning regulations. That requires us to stick to the letter of the law, but it only applies to projects that require planning approval. Or we could have an ordinance amend the building regulations, and that would apply to anything that requires a building permit. It could be similar to the Cal Building Standards that have been proposed, or to Oakland's building measures. Or it could be a combination. Could be regulations that refer to the design guidelines or something like that. The Cal Green proposal is to treat 90 percent of the glass in the lower 40 feet and 60 percent above 40 feet. Gazebo's, atriums, pavilions, passageways, corners, not applying to residential buildings, a pattern meeting the two-by-four rule, etched, friended, filmed, or laminated, or channel glass, or block glass, or grills, screens, netting, sunshades, or blinds. Time switches or occupancy sensors to turn the lights off. They focus on the migration periods, except security and emergency lights, and the Cal Green thing doesn't address lighting or landscaping. So, this is staff throwing something out about what the city might want to do. We could have applicability, panes of glass that are 12 square feet, all buildings citywide, treating 90 percent of facade or freestanding glass with screens, nets, patterns, art, translucent glass, grooved glass, block, has to be grooved to work. Photovoltaics, there is actually such a thing as a photovoltaic that's embedded in glass With biologist's approval, mullions, grates, louvers, overhangs, awnings, recessed angled glass, trying to guess before the building is built whether it will reflect or not. For outdoor lighting, we could also say no spotlights, beams, searchlights, floodlights, lasers, mercury vapor, only downlights on architectural features and limit them to 100 watt bulbs, and okay to light high feet high on a wall for security. And Emeryville already prohibits left lighting. Interior lighting, we could have require automatic shut-off with timers or photo sensors, and shades, blinds, curtains, or the window coverings as part of the building contract. For site design, we could say no mirrors in the landscaping, vent grates the same size, the same pattern, no landscaping inside clear glass and/or outside reflective glass unless you treat the glass, of course. Planning Commission asked me to find out what other cities have been experiencing in implementing their standards. Alameda and Richmond said they have gotten no complaints. Oakland, in Oakland, the residents tend to use things like awnings, balconies, and UV patterns. They have some large products, projects that are starting to ask the Audubon Society to help deal with nighttime lighting. Santa Cruz's standards apply near open spaces, so it's pretty much residence, like a home, and they found that things like friated glass, it's hard to source for a small project because they have minimum order sizes, but there are things that could work. The Planning Commission, there were six people there that night, they all agreed that Emeryville should have some sort of standard. Half of them said that there should be sections in the planning regulations and the design guidelines. Most said it should apply citywide, half said it should apply to the entire building, and half didn't, and most said that the Alameda ordinance would be a good starting point but could be strengthened. Noreen Whedon of the Golden Gate Audubon Society really wanted to be here tonight, but she couldn't, so she sent a letter, which I think got attached to your packet, and I would like to just quote the highlights of her letter. "Birds provide important ecological services. Birds support an $80 billion bird watching industry. In the last 50 years, there was a loss of 3 billion birds in the U.S. and Canada. This is a call for action to you today." I'm quoting. "The Golden Gate Audubon Society offers free classes for architects, for AIA CEUs. Architects are creative problem solvers, and there are many solutions. The Golden Gate Audubon Society strongly supports an ordinance amending the planning regulations," as opposed to design guidelines, which are more flexible, "and that it should apply citywide. Bird safe building standards would bolster Emeryville's gains, goals of sustainability and design excellence." So, what we would like to hear from you first, does the council support adoption of bird safe building standards? And if so, what form should they take? Voluntary measures, bonus points, design guidelines, just relying on SEQA, standard conditions of approval, planning regulation amendment, building regulation amendment, or something else? Should the standards apply citywide or near large open spaces with vegetation or water? Should the standards apply only to the lower 60 feet or the entire building? The Planning Commission asked me to research about where that came from, and there was a quote that more than half of the bird strikes in mid-rise buildings are in the lower 60 feet. Of course, an 11-story building, half the building is in the lower 60 feet, so, but that's what I could find. What requirements should be in the standards? And does this council have any other direction about bird safe building standards? So, that completes my report, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. And Martinez?
Thank you, Diana, for this presentation. I was just curious about, while you were looking up interior lighting standards, if those applied mainly to commercial buildings, or if any applied to residences? Because that seems kind of hard to control.
Some of the ordinances do have limits as to what applies to, like, houses. We don't have a lot of new houses here, but, yeah, we could do that.
Thank you.
Any clarifying questions? Thank you so much, that was very informative. Alright. I'm going to open this up for public comment. I have one speaker card from Misako Hill.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. My name's Misako Hill. I live in Emeryville, and I'm an avid bird lover. There are many species of birds that I see in my backyard. Cooper's hawks, red-tailed hawks, cedar waxwings, warblers, orioles, woodpeckers, many sparrow species, and crows. I support a bird safe building ordinance, and I would be proud to see Emeryville on the national forefront of incorporating measures that would protect wildlife and urban planning. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks so much. Any additional public comment? You do not have to have a card. You can come up if you don't fill one out.
Madam Mayor, everyone, councilmembers, I just want to say a couple of things that I think we should go ahead and really just do all we can to protect the birds. We have the crescent where we have a lot of birds. There are marsh harriers there. For the first time ever, I saw a bald eagle the other day, flying high. I've never seen one in Emeryville, and I've been here since '84, so that was exciting. There are lots of small birds, like hutten spherios and different things going through. There are two peregrine falcons right now. I'm not going to tell you their exact location, but they're where the tall buildings are out on the marina, and you can see them swooping around at the top of that, so I would hope that all, you would consider doing all of the building rather than part of the building. And I could go on for about three hours about birds, but I do hope that you would consider taking the strictest measures over this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional public comment on this item? Alright, seeing none, I'm going to open this up for discussion. Member Bowders, since you're the one who asked for this to be agendized, would you like to start us off here?
Sure, Madam Mayor. Did you want to go through the questions, or did you want us to just give general comments to start?
I think we just go through the questions, unless anyone has, like, a general...
I think if folks are supportive of doing something, there's probably one or two questions we need to spend our time on, so I would leave it to you to decide how you want to do this.
Yeah. Let's start with number one. Does the council support the adoption of bird safe building standards in Emeryville?
Yes.
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 Number two, if so, what form should the standards take? Seeing these from least to most stringent?
My preference would be that it be either planning or building regulations. I appreciate the staff recommendation related to flexibility. However, I think, to the points made by the public and the Audubon Society, that having very clear, defined rules, especially since other cities have done that successfully, there's no harm in doing it, and it should be a statement in our regulations. So, I support either of those. My preference would be building regulations, but I would support planning regulations if the council felt that was more appropriate.
I agree with building regulations.
What exactly would be the difference between planning regulations and building regulations?
Planning regulations would apply to anything that would come before the Planning Commission, and building regulations would be anything that came into City Hall for a permit, which would be other buildings that don't need Planning Commission review.
Okay.
I support building regulations.
If we're going to go there, let's go to building regulations.
Yes.
Madam Mayor, I just want to clarify. I think planning regulations can also apply to things that are non-discretionary.
Okay.
So, permitted under the zoning ordinance, you can have regulations that apply to things that are permitted by right.
Okay.
With regard to the building code, it would require an amendment to the building code if you went beyond the Cal Green. I'm looking for clarification.
Yes.
So, there would be findings that would need to be made if you were amending the building code beyond, I think, what the Cal Green standards are that currently are not proposed to apply to residential.
We'd have to look at that, because the, I believe those findings are required for building code amendments for mandatory sections of the building code, and the bird regulations in the building code would not be mandatory. They'd be voluntary. So, in other words, they don't, so I'm not sure we would...
Unless we chose to make them mandatory, which would be outside of Cal Green, correct?
No, no, that's not what I mean.
Oh.
They're voluntary for the city to adopt.
Oh.
There are certain regulations that are mandatory for the city to adopt, and if we don't adopt them, they take effect anyway. But there are other parts of the building code that are voluntary for the city to adopt, and if we don't adopt them, then they don't take effect. And I believe that the bird, proposed bird safe provisions of the Green Building Code would be voluntary for the city to adopt. Therefore, we could amend them without having to make the findings. I believe that's how it works.
And just to clarify, by amending them, you mean because they're, as drafted by the state, they are not applicable to residential projects, and if this council wanted to make them applicable to residential projects, that would be a local amendment?
Right. Or if we wanted to make other amendments. I would also note that the Cal Green provisions are not in the code that's going to take effect on January 1st. They're what's called a mid-cycle proposal, so if they are ultimately approved by the California Building Standards Commission, they still won't take effect until the middle of 2021, I believe, but we could amend our building code to include them now if we wanted to.
I ask a question.
Yes.
So, from a practical sense, if they went into the planning regulations, as the city manager said, and we made them applicable to all things that require planning review, would it cover the same number of buildings as the building code, or would it be a different cross-section of buildings?
I believe it would be pretty much the same. It's just that the implementation would fall to the building division instead of the planning division. But, yeah, I think it would be pretty much the same universe of projects that we'd be covered.
We could leave some flexibility, depending on how it could be implemented, via planning or building, if we just determined what universe of things we want covered.
Yeah, if it's in one of those, I'm okay.
Okay. I feel similarly.
We can, we can, we can, we can get maybe, when it comes back, details on what would apply or not apply between the two, because it sounds like there might be a slight difference. Okay.
That would be helpful. Three, should the standards apply citywide or near large open spaces with vegetation and/or water? And 3B, should the standards apply to the lower 60 feet of buildings or to the, so that one just not get numbered. Let's start with 3A. Should the standards apply citywide or near large open spaces with vegetation and/or water?
Citywide.
Citywide.
Citywide, I mean. Okay. 3B, should the standards apply to the lower 60 feet or the entire building? Entire building, I think.
Entire building.
Yeah, there was not substantive evidence, not. Okay. What requirement should be in the standards?
So, let me find the right page with the, can we put the slide back up, Diana? It had all your options on there, because that might be helpful for everyone to see. That was what I was trying to get the city manager to help me find the page it was on.
Here.
So, I just want to voice, if we looked at these things, I'm supportive of panes that are 12 square feet or larger. I'm supportive of 90 percent of the facade myself and the other options that are below there. The only ones that I, that I'm not a fan of are, I don't see them listed here, the UV ones, the ones that are, that actually the Audubon Society does not recommend related to birds. They have, they have mixed results that Alameda adopted. I would actually leave those out. I might put them as a voluntary option in addition to any of these, but they have to have one of these. And then the outdoor lighting and the interior lighting are, to me, the most important ones, especially the interior lighting, because I think that meets sustainability goals, and I would be comfortable having to, Councilmember Martinez's question, or earlier question, interior lighting apply to non-residential buildings. People are in their homes at night, the lights are on, but I think commercial buildings that leave all their lights on at night and that attract, and the birds are, especially along the crescent, attracted to, we have red lights at the Hilton Garden Inn that, you know, some of these high-rise signs that we've built are red, and that's attracting them, and then they're flying into the glass. And so, I think we should, we should have an interior light provision with an automatic shut-off or photo sensors and timers for that purpose, and I think we should do the outdoor lighting piece as well. And I don't know if, when existing sign programs, Charlie, that we have with a couple of those peninsulas, if they, if they choose to update or modify it, can we put in this that if there's a grandfathered-in sign that is red, that in the future, the signs cannot be read? Because that's, that's an issue for the birds. And I'm wondering if we can, if they come in, they say, "We want to change, we have a new logo at the Hilton Garden Inn, we want to change it," we can require it to not be read. Could we do that, under the master sign program?
Well, that's not a, that's not a master sign program.
That building might not be, but other ones that are.
Master sign programs can only be modified if the applicants who have that master sign program voluntarily come to the city and ask that the sign program be modified, which is...
When the program, but if, let's say they want to take the sign down and put this, just a modern version of their logo or their sign up, does that, is that them reopening the sign program, or is that considered just a modification?
Yeah. If it's consistent with the existing master sign program, then it would not be a modification. I think the Hilton Garden Inn that you're talking about is, that's not a master sign program. That's just a freestanding sign.
Not that one, but there are other, there are other buildings I'm speaking, Guitar Center, some of these other places. Okay. So, my, I guess my, the interior lighting thing, I think, is super important, and I support the list of things that are here.
Okay. Member Donahue?
I support the interior lighting ideas. I think that's really the big draw. The problem with doing signage, the, you know, the illustration showing the uplighting of red on the Empire State Building, you could see where the birds would really have a problem with that. But before we make any red signage not viable, we ought to think about the consequences of so many companies brand themselves. Some brand themselves nationally, and they have red, you know, it's, that's an issue for us. We could be creating problems going forward for the commercial side of our city for a little too aggressive on that.
If I may respond to that, one of the most iconic brands in the United States, McDonald's, has very strict design standards, but one city, Sedona, also has very strict design standards, and Sedona is the only city in the United States with a McDonald's that does not have a golden arch, because that is not in compliance with their natural beauty standards. It's completely possible to make businesses conform to local standards, even if it's just for a singular McDonald's in the entire U.S. I drove by it and took a picture of one McDonald's.
I also am not a lover of high-rise signs. I feel like they're tramp stamps in the sky, so I don't really care for them anyways. But, you know, so for me, it's, it looks like a suburban, a suburban highway.
That's not where tramp stamps go.
Mayor Medina?
Yes, yes.
Could I just make a comment on this?
That's where tramp stamps go.
I don't believe that any of the other jurisdictions that we looked at, nor do I believe any of these studies that we reviewed have included signage in, in their provisions. It's most, it's all these other provisions that Diana has highlighted.
Perhaps we'll keep this just for this at this time.
Keep it to this, that's fine.
Alright. I wanted to note, for the interior lighting, some of the cities had things limited just to migratory times. I recommend not doing that, just because of the little I know of birds and climate changes, migratory patterns are being messed up.
Yeah, I would also say that, I mean, the burrowing owl is a nearly extirpable Yeah, I would also say that, I mean, the burrowing owl is a nearly extinct species, and it is, there's three or four of them right now at East Shore Park, and there are a lot of birds that have had prior flight patterns through the Bay Area who don't migrate at the same time of year as some of the ones that we commonly have in these periods. And so I think when you look at endangered and nearly extinct species, it would be foolish to, like, draw arbitrary dates on things when there may be birds that are highly vulnerable, but because they have a non-traditional time of movement, that this would benefit if we just had it be applicable. And it would create less burden on businesses to have to wonder when to turn lights on and off.
Right. Okay. So everyone's all right with this list of potential provisions being considered?
Yes.
Fantastic. Is there any other direction that we wanted to give, was the final question? Yep.
So if I may just clarify what I think I've heard, you do not want to put any provisions in the design guidelines. You would prefer to put them either in the planning regulations or the building regulations, correct?
Unless you think that there's value in doing them in addition to, because people review design guidelines first. I understand that's kind of what happens. So if you think there's benefit to putting them in both, there's no harm, but at a minimum, it needs to be in the planning regulations. Would you say that both would be better for your operation?
It's hard to say. I don't know. Diana, do you have an opinion about that?
The good thing about the guidelines is the architects can read them, and they see them pretty early in the process. I don't like the idea of having, trying to have the same thing in both and making sure that they stay consistent.
You could put a line in, perhaps, that says, "Please refer to our bird."
Can we just have a line that says, "Refer to section blah, blah, blah of the planning code for mandatory design guidelines?" We could just do that.
Just put a line in the design guidelines, refer to the code.
Well, as an example, the family-friendly unit design, that's something that is not an exact science. And we have a whole long section in the design guidelines of the family-friendly unit designs, and it lists a whole lot of different criteria. We don't necessarily hold a designer of a building to every single one of those criteria. They have to meet most of them, but they don't necessarily have to meet all of them, because it's kind of impossible to meet all of them. But we have a reference in the planning regulations that refer to the guidelines that say you got to comply with these guidelines in this project.
Yes.
So that's how that works. If you want to make it a little more flexible, like, say, you know, you can do, if you have 10 or 12 provisions, you can do, you know, 10 of them or something.
For this, we've given direction that we're interested in flexibility or choose your own adventure of bird safety. But perhaps a directive in the design guidelines to look at those more fleshed-out building or planning regulations would be helpful.
Yeah, and just to clarify on the other direction, I just want to be clear that I think the council's direction is that we want it, regardless of which code section staff want to recommend it come into, that it apply to not just things that come before the Planning Commission, but all things that would be subject to review, residential, commercial.
Oh, absolutely. The section, actually, in the staff report, we, I think we made a recommendation or a suggestion as to which section of the planning regulations this should go into, and that section applies to everything. It doesn't just apply to planning commission approvals.
Okay, that works for me.
Is that adequate direction?
Yes.
Okay, great. Then I'm going to adjourn this meeting.
I'll say one last thing. I just want to take a moment and thank Diana Kena for all your work on this. This was something that was asked for your, I know there's a lot of things on the staff's plate, and so this was something that had to be worked along, and the report and the research on this was excellent, very comprehensive, and it's very clear that this is something that cities should be doing, and I'm very grateful that we're moving in that direction. So thank you.
I can tell you like birds by the way you wrote the staff report. Thank you very much for all your work on this, and I'm going to adjourn this meeting. Our next meeting will be at 7:14, so we have a quick break before then.
Okay, it is seven fourteen. I call to order a special meeting for the city of Emeryville. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Bowers.
Here.
Councilmember Donahue.
Here.
Councilmember Martinez.
Here.
Vice Mayor Pats.
Here.
And Mayor Medina.
Here. Can we get an approval of the final agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Going to motion by Member Martinez, a second by Member Bowers. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Bowers.
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue.
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pats.
Aye.
And Mayor Medina.
Aye. Any ex parte communications to report? Any public comment for items not on the agenda? Mr. Carpio.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Andre Carpio. And I want to report that on the last item, something important has been missing that was not even mentioned that I could see. And this is the sonic effect on bird. As you know, ba, the bat. They can fly in the dark and they don't hit anything because they have a hissing sound that they reflect and it tells them what distance. Some birds are very sensitive to that. For instance, the howl is also flying at night, has a very sensitive here on a different frequency. And the frequency is very important. For instance, years ago, the jet engine were very disturbing. So the manufacturer changed the alloy of the blade and the design and so the frequency is still there. But it's a lower range of the human here. So that frequency affect the bird and the bird animal, especially the cats. So what I see here is that not only we forgot that item that is very important, but also there is prevention. Is that we have mini cone that we can put on glasses and on the wall that will reflect and refocus the sound to the bird. And so they will hear their flapping of the wing. And so this is something that has been missing. And that you should have see that also you mentioned interior lighting. Interior lighting, they will all be fixed out except for the LED. And the LED does not have, because it does not have an energy sensor that bring the heat. The LED doesn't have the infrared and the ultraviolet. And because of that, some birds are sensitive to that and some are not, those especially flying at night. So forget about the interior lighting. Everything is going to be LED, all the sign and all that. You didn't mention a word about that. Thank you.
An additional public comment for items not on the agenda? Okay.
So tonight you're going to be talking about the quarter cent sales tax measure, which I'm not going to be talking about now. I will talk about that perhaps later. But everybody knows, sales taxes are regressive. And so I think that you should generally not do them. However, what I am here to talk about is, we have corporate entities in Emeryville that aren't paying their fair share of taxes. And that's one of the reasons why you're talking about a sales tax, a regressive sales tax. So I think what instead you should be doing is looking into trying to make the corporations that aren't paying their fair share in Emeryville, make them pay their fair share. For instance, right over here Pixar. You know, we've tried to tax them and they're trying to now maintain, for several years, maintain that their their profits are made out of Burbank, California. And that's why we can't levy any taxes on them. So it's a huge percentage of Emeryville's square footage. Almost 10% of our land is right there, is prime Emeryville land. We should be gathering income from weaving revenue from the city. But we're not, because they're dodging their taxes. So I think what you should do is consider having a head tax, a corporate head tax. So you tax corporations in Emeryville based on the number of employees. And that's something that they could not weasel out of. And I don't know the status of other corporations in Emeryville, but I'm sure some of them are also weaseling out of the taxes that they, their fair share that they owe us. So look into a corporate head tax, you know, maybe in conjunction with the sales tax, but at least, if not, instead of a sales tax. It's because it's, you know, they should be paying their fair share, like especially Pixar, but other companies possibly as well too. Corporate head tax, tax on the number of employees. Thank you.
Any other public comment for items not on the agenda? You already spoke, sir. That is not an agenda item. All right. So we're going to move on to action item six point one, council consideration of whether to form an ad hoc committee of the city council to prepare direct argument and rebuttal argument in favor of a sales tax measure to be placed on the March third, 2020 ballot. All right.
Mayor and council members, at your special meeting on October 29th, Councilmember Bowers received support to form an ad hoc committee for the purpose of authoring a ballot measure argument. So that is what you're here to do tonight. Take it away.
Thank you. All right. Last time we did place a measure on the ballot, we had an ad hoc committee to write the ballot statement. I believe Member Bowers was on that with Member Martinez. Would either of you like to speak first about this item?
Are you on it?
I'm with you.
Wasn't it you?
Was it me? I don't know, it was two years ago. Well, we'll call public comment, then we're going to do it. Public comment on this item?
Yes.
Okay.
I want you to be very transparent with the sales tax about how the, where the money's going to be spent on. What, exactly what percentages are going to whom. I understand quite a bit of it's going to the police department, to the fire department. Some pittance, I understand, is going towards ECDC, perhaps, if there's any money left over. This is my understanding, I might be wrong. And then maybe some other, some small amount towards a code officer here at City Hall. But we need to know these things specifically and precisely so before we can vote on them. So make sure, I'm telling you to make sure this committee makes it transparent exactly what monies are going to be spent on this quarter cent percent sales tax. Because for me, just for me personally, if it's heavily weighted towards fire and cops, well, I'm going to vote against it. If it's weighted towards ECDC, the Child Development Center, and, you know, code officer for City Hall, well, I tend to more support it even though it is regressive. But I'm not going to, you know, me and many other people would be against a regressive sales tax that's going to hire more cops and more firefighters. Or, you know, more for, or more equipment or whatever. So could you please, I just want you to make sure that you're very transparent, above board. Let us know with specificity what the money is going to be spent on. Thank you very much.
Any additional public comment on this item?
I just want to mention that company that have forty-nine or more employee have a different tax bracket. And so there is lots of juggling about the personal in their employment to be below. Because over that, it's a different tax system. And I really like to be involved in that, so I could have my input on it. Since I've experienced that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional public comment on this item? All right. Seeing none, I'm going to open it up for discussion. So we have two seats to be on an ad hoc committee. Does anyone want to be on the ad hoc committee to write a ballot measure argument in favor of the sales tax?
I'm willing to if others don't want to do it.
Member Bowers. Anyone else want to do it?
I'm willing to do it by myself if you would want.
I will join you.
Okay.
Fantastic. All right. Do we need to do a vote on this, Sherry?
Yes, please.
All right. I move that Member Bowers and Member Martinez form the ad hoc committee to prepare a direct argument and rebuttal argument in favor of a sales tax measure to be placed on the March third, 2020 ballot.
Second.
Thank you. We've got a second from Vice Mayor Pats. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Bowers.
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue.
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pats.
Aye.
And Mayor Medina.
Aye. All right. I'm going to adjourn that meeting. It is seven twenty-three. And I'm going to call to order the city of Emeryville as a successor agency to the Emeryville Redevelopment Agency. We are all still here. Can I get an approval of the final agenda?
Second.
We've got a motion by Member Bowers, a second by Member Donahue. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Bowers.
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue.
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pats.
Aye.
And Mayor Medina.
Aye. Any ex parte communications to report? Any public comment for consent agenda items or items not on this agenda? All right. Seeing none, do we have a motion for consent?
So moved.
Second.
We've got a motion from Member Martinez, a second from Member Bowers. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Bowers.
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue.
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pats.
Aye.
And Mayor Medina.
Aye. All right. This meeting is adjourned. It is seven twenty-four PM. I call to order the city council meeting for the city of Emeryville. We're all still here. May I get an approval of the final agenda?
I move approval.
Second.
Going to motion for Member Donahue, a second from Vice Mayor Pats. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Bowers.
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue.
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pats.
Aye.
And Mayor Medina.
Aye. Any special orders of the day?
There are none.
Any announcements of commission or committee vacancies?
You'll be making appointments at your next meeting.
Thank you so much. Any council member special announcements or reports on meetings attended?
Madam Mayor, I have a couple.
Yes, Member Martinez.
East Bay Community Energy held a joint press conference earlier this week to announce a partnership with other CCAs in calling for solar companies for proposals to increase resilience, focusing on low income and medically sensitive households. So they're calling on solar companies to come up with proposals for battery storage connected to residential solar. I also recently attended the League of California Cities Annual Conference in Long Beach. And I just wanted to report back that the item that gave us concern, which was Rule 20A, and had to do with funding for undergrounding in fire-sensitive communities. And that was referred back to committee, so we did not vote on that. However, we did roll on the resolution regarding, let me see what the title was. Calling upon the federal and state governments to address the devastating impacts of international transboundary pollution flows into the southernmost regions of California and the Pacific Ocean. And we did vote in the affirmative to support the league in their work to restore and ensure proper funding for environmental infrastructure at the US-Mexico boundary in California.
Thank you. Any other special announcements or reports on meetings attended, since we've all seen each other last week? Nope. Okay. I'm going to make an announcement. On Friday at 6:00 PM at Spats Bar on Shattuck, if you would like to get a drink, you can have it poured by Member Bowers, Mayor Libby Schaaf, and some, who else is on your shift?
Councilmember Gibson McElhany, from Oakland.
It is a fundraiser hosted by the Stonewall Democratic Club. I will be there. Highly recommend. Personal experience, he's an excellent bartender. All right. City managers.
The money goes to support transgender organizations that support women of color in particular.
The money's collected by tips, which will be matched by each Aces Bay Stonewall Dem. So it's important that Emeryville raises the most tips because we are competitive. So I will be there. Is there a city manager's report?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just briefly, a reminder that Thursday, this week, November 7th, there is a Emeryville Center of Community Life Governance Committee meeting at 5:30 and then a joint meeting of the city council and the Emory Unified School Board at 6 o'clock.
I will need a drink at Friday afternoon.
Again, come on Friday, apparently.
That will be good timing. Any ex parte communications to report?
I do, Madam Mayor. Item 11.1, I've had a conversation with both Wareham Development and CCRP and its members.
On item 11.1, I had a conversation with John Gooden about the process of the public hearing.
Nope.
Okay. All right. Any public comment for consent agenda items or items not on this agenda?
Vice Mayor, council members. Ruth Major, I have two things I want to talk about. In the last few days, a global group of around 11,000 scientists have endorsed research that said the world is facing a climate emergency. The study, based on 40 years of data on a range of measures, says governments are failing to address the crisis. Without deep and lasting changes, the world is facing untold human suffering, the study says. California is an example of this catastrophe, as it burns each year and is a reminder of our folly. And this is about what's happening with the cars at the federal level. General Motors, Toyota, Fiat Chrysler, Nissan, Hyundai, Kia, Azuzu, Maserati, McLaren, Aston Martin, and Ferrari are siding with President Trump in the president's efforts to end California's ability to regulate tailpipe emissions. I ask that the city of Emeryville let the Coalition of Sustainable Automotive Regulation, as they call themselves, to let them know that this behavior is unacceptable for California, the planet, and its people. And I respectfully ask the city in future only to buy from the following four auto companies, BMW, Ford, Volkswagen, and Honda, as they are backing California's regulations. We must consider everything we do in the future to make sure the planet survives. And that includes environmentally sound buildings, looking at our traffic, and all transportation that the city buys. My second request is to think about what Apple has just done. Apple is providing 2.5 billion to combat the housing crisis, and other corporations are also stepping up and providing funds. I ask the city to approach corporations in our city to aid with these funds, Walt Disney, Pixar, Wareham, Novartis, to name a few. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment for consent agenda or items not on the agenda?
Pardon me. I'll get to the last speaker to talk about planet-wide suffering, and I'm here to talk about micro-suffering. Although I don't think she advised you to buy Volkswagen, but I don't think you should do that because they're lying sacks of shit. Volkswagen lied to the people of the United States when they gamed the auto emission standards a couple of years ago. They were caught and they're lying sacks of shit. And so I don't think we should be buying from Volkswagen. But the other companies, perhaps. There's actually no, it's like, there's no good oil companies, there's probably also no good auto companies, but I guess we should go for the least bad. Okay. Micro-suffering, not on a planet-wide basis, but there are people suffering here in Emeryville. These are people that use bicycles on 45th Street and on 53rd Street. And they're suffering because they are being put in harm's way because of malfeasance, or I should say, lack of governance on your part. We've known now for two years that those two streets have an excess number of vehicles and therefore bicyclists are unsafe. And we know that because more than two years ago, the city paid for a traffic count, as is your duty to do vis-à-vis the bike plan. And we have known for more than two years that there's too much car, too many cars, too many vehicles on those two streets to be properly considered a bike boulevard. So the remedy, as you're all aware, is to upgrade the bike, those two bike boulevards to the next level of traffic calming, which you have not done. You've had two years to do it, and you haven't done it. So you're placing bicycles, bicyclists, in harm's way. People could be injured or killed because of your lack of action on this issue. We paid $200,000 for our bike plan. We take our bike plan seriously. We want to have bike boulevards in Emeryville. We know that because of the democratically vetted general pen of which the bike plan is part of. And the city has been recalcitrant, just haven't done your due diligence, haven't done your duty vis-à-vis bicycle safety. So you've had your time to do it, more than your time, you haven't done it. So I'm here to ask you, especially Mayor Medina, since you sit on the BPEC, you're the BPEC liaison, what are your intentions regarding the 45th Street and the 53rd Street bike boulevards? And I'll wait for an answer. Use the rest of my time waiting for an answer. What are your intentions, please? Tell us, the people of Emeryville, what are your intentions with those two streets for bike safety?
I plan to ask for a future agenda item to discuss that.
It's going to wait?
That's fine.
We're waiting for an answer.
Cool.
Thank you. Anyway.
All right. Any other public comment for consent agenda or items not on the agenda? Yes, Mr. Carpio.
I don't have much grievance, except that I paid tax here for 50 years in this town, and I ended up to be homeless. You people, you know, just demolished my house. Not only demolished my house, but you desegreted. Desegreted all my working tools, all my engineering project. Everything was junk. And I like to make a comparison. For instance, Ms. Martinez, she produced two children. So let's say that she is unsanitary, unhealthy, blight, and all that. Are you going to disassemble her genitals? The same thing, she did it. You did it to me. You took my tool and crashed everything. And that public official doesn't answer my letters. I pay for his salary. I pay for the salary of all the people who work against me here. I pay tax. And I want to make a billing on that. You owe me. Thank you.
Any other public comment for the consent agenda or items not on this agenda? Okay. Seeing none, can we get a motion for the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Got a motion from Member Bowers, and a second from Member Donahue. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Bowers.
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue.
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pats.
Aye.
And Mayor Medina.
Aye. All right. That brings us to item 11.1, an appeal by Wareham Development of resolution of the Planning Commission of the city of Emeryville approving a final development plan for parcel B of the Marketplace redevelopment project for an eight-story building. There's a lot to that. Item 11.1. Not going to do the whole thing.
Mayor Medina, members of the city council, I am filling in for Miro Desai tonight, who is on a well-deserved vacation. So I will be giving the staff presentation on this public hearing item. To begin with, the recommended procedure for this hearing item. You have on the dais in front of you a handout, I assume from the city attorney, that is similar to what is on the screen before you. I don't think that it's identical, though. And so at this point, I would like to turn it over to the city attorney to discuss the recommended procedure for tonight's meeting.
Thank you, Charlie. So Mayor and council, on the screen before you is the procedure that staff is recommending that you follow for this public hearing. Since this deviates from your rules of procedure, if you were to adopt this procedure or a separate one, you would need to take a motion and a vote to adopt the procedure. But this is the procedure that staff is recommending. So let me walk through it really quickly. After the staff presentation and any council clarifying questions, each side, starting with the appellant, would be allowed to present their presentation, which is limited to 15 minutes per side. And after each presentation, the council would have an opportunity to ask clarifying questions. Excuse me. Thereafter, we would recommend that you open the public hearing and take any public testimony from any speakers, limited to three minutes per speaker, and then you close the public hearing, followed by rebuttal argument from each side, starting with the applicant and ending with the appellant, with each side limited to five minutes. And also an opportunity for clarifying questions from the council. The council is then, would then be free to deliberate and ask any questions, either to the applicant, the appellant, or the staff. At that point, the council, if the council feels like they have enough information to be able to articulate findings and give direction to the staff to prepare a resolution, then you can provide that direction to us tonight. And we would bring that resolution back to you at a future meeting. you at a future meeting. If the council does provide that direction to prepare a resolution tonight, we would recommend that you direct us to bring that resolution and notice it as a public hearing, at which point the council would reopen the public hearing and take public testimony at that time, re-close the, and then close the public hearing before adopting that resolution. So that is the procedure that we are recommending tonight. And again, if you were to adopt this, you would need to take a vote on that. Thank you.
There is one thing I would like to point out that is different from what's on the screen in front of you and what was put on the dais, which, under public hearing, says organize presentations by group spokesperson, if any, limited to 10 minutes. Is that included in our recommended procedure?
That's right, yes. Thank you, Charlie.
Member Bowders?
I have a clarifying question for the city attorney. At what point in this process does the administrative record become closed?
So the administrative record continues until the council has adopted their resolution. So the administrative record will include any resolution that you ultimately adopt.
Okay. So the rebuttals, the public hearing closing does not prevent rebuttals from being included?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there a motion to accept these procedures for appeals?
I move to accept.
For a second?
A second.
Got a motion from Member Donahue, and a second from Member Martinez to accept this procedure. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Bowders.
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue.
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Patz.
Aye.
And Mayor Medina.
Aye. So this is the order in which we're gonna go. We called the item Staff Presentation.
All right. First item is the staff presentation, and here is an overview of the staff presentation. I'll start by just recapping the action that we are requesting of the council tonight, then the standard of review for an appeal, just to remind you of that, the background and chronology of the parcel B marketplace project. And then I will review what the project actually is that is being proposed. The applicant, as you know, has also submitted last Thursday a proposed alternative, and I will describe that as well. Then the findings you must make are concerning conformity of the project with the PUD and PDP, and also the conformity of the project with the conditions of approval of the PUD and PDP. So I will be reviewing how the project conforms to the PUD, and also the applicant's proposed alternative, and then how the project conforms with the conditions of approval, and also the conformity with the proposed alternative. Concerning the conditions of approval, there are many of them. At your meeting on October 1st, the council identified some key issues that you were concerned about, and so I'm just gonna talk about those key issues in the interest of brevity. And it may not be all that brief, but I'll make it as brief as I can. And those key issues included wind, aesthetics, and building height. And then I will conclude again with the direction that we are seeking from the council. So as we said, we recommend that you open the public hearing, take testimony, close the public hearing, and then provide direction to prepare a resolution to either approve the commission, the planning commission's action upon a finding that all applicable findings have been correctly made and all provisions of the planning regulations have been complied with, or approve the commission's action but impose additional conditions and/or guarantees as it deems necessary to fulfill the purposes of the planning regulations, or disapprove the commission's action upon a finding that all applicable findings have not been made, or all provisions of the planning regulations have not been complied with. And in addition, under the planning regulations, the council may continue the hearing and request a supplemental report from the planning commission. So this is the action that, one of these things, is what we're requesting your direction on tonight. The standard of review. Under the planning regulations, when you are reviewing a decision on appeal, the council uses the same, same standards of review as the planning commission in its original decision. So when you are considering whether to approve, approve with modifications, or deny this project, you must address the findings for a final development plan that are set forth in the planning regulations. And those are, one, that the final development plan substantially conforms to the preliminary development plan, and, two, that changes in conditions of approval specified by the city council in its approval of the preliminary development plan have been met. These findings must be based on substantial evidence in light of the whole record, and if the project were to be denied, I just want to point out that the applicant would still be entitled to construct the previously proposed garage project on parcel B that did not include office and laboratory space, and that was approved by Planning Commission Resolution Number FDP 15001. I also want to note that the emphasis of my presentation tonight is on the ability of the project to meet the findings that are listed above here. Issues that were raised in the appeal were addressed at your meeting on October 1st. So tonight, I don't intend to go back through the appeal letter and all of the points in it and respond to those. We did that before. Tonight's meeting will be mainly on the project itself and the ability to make the findings. We will be referencing items from the appeal as appropriate in discussing the project's ability to make the findings. So the background and chronology of this project. Back in August of 2008, the city council approved the preliminary development plan and preliminary, I'm sorry, the planned unit development and preliminary development plan, or PUD, PDP, for the marketplace project. This approval laid out the site plan, the mix of uses, the heights of buildings, and the general massing of this planned unit development. This is the site plan of the final build-out of the PUD, just for orientation. North is to the left, here are the railroad tracks. Christie Avenue is down here. This is the ME project, which I'll talk about in a second. This is Christie Avenue Park here. This is what we now call parcel D. This is what we now call parcel C. Parcel B, which is the subject of the appeal, is here, and what we now call parcel A is over here. And in the middle here are the existing marketplace buildings. This is a bird's-eye view that was included in the PUD that gives a general idea of what the massing of the project could be. And I want to highlight in this figure from the PUD, this word illustrative, just to underscore that this drawing is only intended to be illustrative. It's not intended to suggest that the final building plans that result in this PUD are going to look exactly like this. And I will come back to that point later on in my presentation. So in terms of the chronology of the approvals of the PUD, back in October of 2010, the city council approved a final development plan for the first building, which was a 190-unit rental project at 64th and Christie. And I would note that this approval occurred before the planning regulations were amended to now require planning commission approval of FDPs. So the first FDP for this project was approved by the city council under the current code at the time. It was also before the PUD was purchased by the applicant, by CCRP. It was, this was TMG Partners that did that FDP. This building, called the, now called the ME project, has been constructed and is now occupied. Then between February of 2015 and June of 2016, the planning commission approved final development plans for four new buildings, an expanded and renovated park, realignment of Shellmount Street, and the creation of 62nd, 63rd Street and Market Drive. These are the buildings and park that the planning commission approved. Parcel E is the park. Parcel C1 is the grocery store with parking on top that is completed. Parcel C2 is the 66 units that wrap that building, and they are currently under construction. Parcel D is a 223-unit residential building, which is virtually complete and partially occupied now. And parcel A is a 167-unit residential building that has been approved, but construction has not yet started. And then, of course, finally, we have parcel B, the subject of tonight's appeal, and the original approval for that included ground-floor retail and 300 parking spaces. And this is how those all lay out. Here's the ME project at 64th and Christie. Here's parcel D here, 223 units. This is parcel C with the grocery store, parking, and the 66 units of residential around it. Parcel B, the subject of tonight's appeal. And parcel A over here, there's also a small retail pad over here called parcel F that has not had an FDP applied for yet. And then you have the existing marketplace retail building here and food hall, and then the office tower here. Continuing on with the chronology, the parcel B FDP was approved on June 23rd of 2016. It accommodated parking and ground-floor retail. As I said, the parking would have provided, parking, the garage would have provided parking for the existing commercial uses that are in the project and that have been previously served by surface parking lots on parcel C, as well as the existing surface parking lot on parcel A. City Center, after this approval, decided that they wanted to modify the FDP for parcel B, or they wanted to modify the project to accommodate office and laboratory space. And what they proposed was a 113-foot-tall eight-story building that includes 14,000 square feet of ground-floor retail, four levels of structured parking, including 565 spaces, and 150,000 square feet of office and lab space on the top three levels. This FDP was approved by the planning commission this past January. That approval was appealed by Wareham on February 8th of this year. The council then remanded that appeal back to the planning commission on March 19th. The commission reviewed the appeal and unanimously reapproved the project on May 14th. The council then called that approval for review on May 21st, and the approval was also appealed again by Wareham on May 29th. On October 1st, you held a meeting to consider the appeal and decided to set a public hearing for tonight. And then last Thursday, October 31st, 2019, the applicant submitted a proposed alternative project. So to describe the project now and the proposed alternative, this is the site. We are standing on the bridge over the railroad, looking to the northwest. So Shellmount Street is right here. In the foreground here is the existing surface parking lot on parcel A. The parcel B site is this big vacant lot here that's to the right of Shellmount Street. This is the marketplace office building and the marketplace retail building. Of course, over here in the background, you can see Pacific Park Plaza. And then behind the site is parcel C, the grocery store and garage building that's been completed. And then in the distance, you see parcel D in this picture, which was taken a few months ago. It's still under construction, but it's substantially complete at this point. And this is an aerial view showing where the parcel is. Again, it's right here to the, across the street from the existing public market buildings. Walking through the plans for the proposed FDP building that was approved by the planning commission, this is the ground floor, showing the retail space along Shellmount Street, and then service and ramps up to the garage above on the east side of the ground floor. This is what a typical parking level looks like. And then above that are typical office laboratory floors. There are three floors, six, seven, and eight. And then this is the roof with the stacks you can see here. There is a vehicle and bicycle circulation plan. There is a pedestrian circulation plan. This is the servicing plan, where you can see the service vehicles would come in through the back of the building or from the street, and trucks would unload in the back, and then for the retail, they would be either walked out along the sidewalk from the front or through service hallways in the back. This is the west elevation, facing Shellmount Street. You can see the retail on the ground floor, then the three levels, or four levels of parking, rather, and then the three office laboratory levels above that. And I would note that these, the garage levels are open to the exterior. And then this is the corresponding elevation on the east side, facing the railroad. The applicant is proposing to have public art covering those garage openings on the east and west sides, and these are examples of the work of the seven artists that have been shortlisted for this covering of the garage openings. The north and south elevations are similar. They also have garage openings and then three levels of office lab space on top. I would note that the planning commission's conditions of approval for this called for the garage openings to be treated in a similar manner to the east and west side openings, aesthetically similar and compatible manner. Not necessarily public art, but similar manner. And then this is an aerial view at build-out of the entire PUD. You see the parcel B building here. This is parcel D that is finished. This is parcel C that is substantially finished. The ME building is over here in the background to the right. And then parcel A, which has not been started yet, is here beyond parcel B. And this is an elevation from the south. The cut line is kind of jaggy here. You can see it goes like this. But this is what you see from the south, just to compare what the massing, relative massing of all the various buildings is. This is the existing Market Hall building here to the left, and then the marketplace office tower across the street. Then is the parcel B building, then the railroad, and across the railroad is the existing Emery Station West Transit Center building. And then to the east of that is the Heritage Square Garage building. Concerning the applicant's proposed alternative, last Thursday, October 31st, they submitted a proposed alternative project for parcel B. That would be a building 120 feet tall, nine stories, and it would include 15,700 square feet of ground-floor retail, four levels of structured parking with about 500 spaces, and, again, 150,000 square feet of office space, but this time it would be on the top four floors instead of three floors. The laboratory floors have been reduced from 16 feet to 15 feet, floor to floor. The parking has been reduced from 12 feet to 10 feet 8 inches, floor to floor. And the applicant states that this new design responds to concerns that they've heard about wind, public art integration, articulation, massing, and parking. This is a drawing that's in this new plan set that covers those five points and talks about their response to each of those issues. I won't read this to you, but it's in the, it's in the materials that you have been provided. I do, however, just want to highlight one sentence here, where it says, under public art integration, it says, "The building provides a canvas for public art and will incorporate the winning artist's concepts with council participation on the east and west sides of the base of the building." So this is the ground floor of the proposed alternative. It's very similar to the FDP that the city, that the planning commission approved. It is about 18 feet shorter, north to south. So this southern wall of this proposed building is about 18 feet north of where the southern wall of the planning commission's approved FDP is. The rest of it is pretty much the same. And then parking, again, is similar to the approved FDP. This is what the lab floors would look like, and now it's on four floors instead of three. And the lab tower is about 100 feet shorter, north to south. I think this is about 333 feet, and the approved FDP is 433 feet. So this southern wall here is about 100 feet north of where it is in the planning commission's approved FDP. And there's four floors instead of three, still totaling 150,000 square feet. This is the elevation from the Shellmount Street side. You can see the tower is now narrower by 100 feet, and the parking is about the same, a little bit shorter. And then the exposed top floor of the parking here on the southern end would be a landscaped terrace. There's still retail on the ground floor and still the open parking between the retail and the lab space. And similarly, this is what the east elevation looks like. Again, they are proposing public art in these openings on the east and west elevations. This, again, is the north and south elevations. They look pretty similar to the approved FDP, but in the south elevation, you need to remember that this tower here is stepped back about 100 feet from the current FDP, the approved FDP by the planning commission. And this parking here is about 18 feet further north than what the other FDP, the planning commission-approved FDP shows. Also, you still have the open garage openings here, which, for the approved FDP, the planning commission required to be covered with some similar treatment to the east and west elevations. This is a bird's-eye view. This is a new drawing that is not in the current FDP plan set. This just shows what it would look like from the northeast. You can see how it steps down. And then from the opposite side, from looking from the southeast, this is what it would look like. I do want to reference the appeal letter at this point. The appeal included what they call Appeal Option 1 and 1A. I believe the only difference between 1 and 1A is that one of them had underground parking and the other one didn't. In the appeal letter, they included a view from the east side. It was- It wasn't this exact view, but it was this view. And, uh, in this view, you can see some similarities between Wareham's Appeal Option one and one A and the, uh, new applicant's proposed alternative. Similarly, I just want to show you some illustrations that were included in the various, uh, plan sets, just for comparison. This is the FDP that was approved by the Planning Commission. This drawing is included in the FDP plan set that was approved. This drawing is, was submitted by Wareham with their appeal letter. And this is, uh, the new drawing that the applicant has submitted with their proposed alternative. So clearly you can see some similarities between the Wareham Appeal Option and the applicant's new proposed alternative. Going on to conformity with the approved PUD and PDP. So the PUD calls for a building of up to a hundred and twenty thousand square feet of office, twenty-nine thousand one hundred and fifty square feet of commercial space, five hundred and eighteen parking spaces, and a height not to exceed a hundred and twenty feet on, uh, parcel B. These parameters may be modified according to the conditions of approval, as long as the FAR, the floor area ratio for the entire PUD does not exceed two-point-oh in the aggregate, and the height and general massing does not exceed what was in the approved PDP, general massing. The FAR with the inclusion of the parcel B project is one-point-eight-four for the entire PUD, and therefore it does not exceed two-point-oh. And also, the applicant's proposed alternative, which has a similar amount of floor area to the project, would not alter this FAR calculation, so it'd still be below the two-point-oh FAR. The project's height is a hundred and thirteen feet and does not exceed the height in the PDP, and the height of the applicant's proposed alternative is a hundred and twenty feet, and therefore it does not exceed the height in the PDP either. And while the project would contain thirty thousand square feet more office space than the PDP calls for on this parcel, the overall intensity of the PUD at buildout would still be less than allowed by the PDP. And this, uh, table illustrates that. This is what the PDP allows in aggregate for the entire PUD. Six hundred and seventy-four residential units, three hundred thousand square feet of commercial, which includes a hundred and eighty thousand square feet of retail and a hundred and twenty thousand square feet of office, and two thousand eighty-nine parking spaces. The FDPs in aggregate, including the FDP that the Planning Commission approved for parcel B, would total six hundred and forty-nine residential units, or twenty-five fewer than the PDP. Of course, parcel B doesn't include residential, so that doesn't really apply here. Uh, the total commercial space, including parcel B, would be two hundred and nine thousand eight hundred square feet, which is about ninety thousand square feet less than the overall, uh, PDP allows. The, uh, retail would be about a hundred and twenty thousand square feet less, and the office would be about thirty thousand square feet more. But in aggregate, the total commercial space would still be ninety thousand square feet less than what the PDP allows. And, uh, the total number of parking spaces would be fifteen hundred and fifty-nine, which is five hundred and twenty-three spaces less than the PDP allows. So compared to the approved PUD, there will be about ninety thousand square feet less commercial space, and these numbers would be similar for the applicant's proposed alternative. The only real difference is that they have now reduced the parking by a further sixty-five spaces. They're proposing five hundred spaces as opposed to five hundred and sixty-five. So that would change this number here to fourteen hundred and ninety-four, and the difference to, uh, five hundred and eighty-eight spaces, fewer than the PDP allows. Now going on to conformity with the conditions of approval, as I previously said, the key issues that were identified by the City Council at your October first meeting were wind, aesthetics, and building height. So I will go through the FDP and the alternative, uh, the applicant's proposed alternative conformance to these conditions of approval in these three areas. First concerning wind, the EIR for the project found that the shape and massing of the building that would be constructed on the Shellmount site would create accelerated wind areas on the roof deck terraces within the fourth-floor pedestrian crossing connection with the Amtrak Bridge that could substantially affect pedestrian comfort. And the AIR found that two mitigation measures, wind one A and wind one B, would reduce any potential impact to less than significant. Wind one A required certain types of landscaping and building structures to be incorporated into the design of parcel A. They were incorporated into the design of parcel A that has now been approved by the Planning Commission and was not appealed, so that is really not an issue. And wind one B required an an examination of the fourth-floor breezeway between the Amtrak Pedestrian Bridge and the proposed parcel A building to ensure that winds did not exceed thirty-six miles per hour. Um, I would note that neither of these two mitigation measures are worded broadly enough to apply to the entire PDP or specifically to parcel B, and neither the EIR nor the conditions of approval mentions a wind comfort threshold of eleven miles per hour. That is not flagged as a threshold of significance in the EIR or in the conditions of approval. Thirty-six miles an hour is, but eleven miles per hour is not. And just for context here, this is really what the condition of approval and the mitigation measure apply to. This is the so-called breezeway that goes across the railroad and comes down the staircase to Shellmount Street, and this is the, what was referred to as the Shellmount Building in the EIR and the conditions of approval. It doesn't really apply to parcel B. Nonetheless, the applicant has examined the wind effects on parcel B and submitted a qualitative wind study, uh, by Donald Bellanti in March of this year, and he concluded that based on the exposure, massing, and orientation of the proposed building, that's on parcel B, it would not have the potential to adversely affect ground-level winds near its base at the proposed landscape open space areas to the north or south ends of the site, within the adjacent parcel A to the south, or at properties east of the site on the far side of the tracks. That was, again, a qualitative assessment. The applicant then submitted a quantitative winds tunnel analysis by RWDI in May, and this was based on, uh, building a scale replica of the parcel B building and the surroundings, and then testing that in a wind tunnel. This study concluded that the project will result in no locations with winds over thirty-six miles per hour, and the number of locations with winds over eleven miles per hour would be about the same or less than existing conditions. The appellant then submitted a wind study by CPP in, also in May, which addressed the findings of the RWDI wind tunnel study and concluded that for the parcel B FDP would result in uncomfortable wind conditions in the corridor between parcels A and B, whereas the original PDP building configuration would not. Uh, the applicant submitted a response to that by RWDI in June that included, uh, that noted that the CPP analysis considered only wind results at a few locations between parcels A and B and did not compare to baseline conditions. And then the applicant submitted last Friday an updated wind tunnel analysis by RWDI that analyzed the proposed alternative project and also propos, uh, analyzed the PDP building, which is hypothetical, has not been built, will not be built, but just for analysis purposes, they built a model of what the PDP building would look like and put that in their wind tunnel. And the conclusions of that were that the proposed alternative project would result in no locations within winds over thirty-six miles an hour, and the wind comfort conditions would be about the same as existing, and that the PDP would actually result in five locations along Shellmount Street with winds exceeding thirty-six miles per hour, and winds in the corridor between parcel A and parcel B that would generally be slightly worse for the PDP than either the project or the proposed alternative. And I'm now going to show you some pictures from those, uh, wind studies. Um, these are all from the wind tunnel analysis. So the first, uh, five pictures will be regarding the thirty-six mile per hour threshold for hazard conditions, and that was the threshold that was flagged in the EIR and in the conditions of approval. Um, so just to orient you, north is at the top in this drawing. Here's the railroad here. Here's site B, right there, parcel B, rather. Parcel A is here. The existing marketplace buildings are over here on this side of Shellmount Street, and this is parcel C up here. Down here, you see some kind of gray buildings. That's because the future buildings that could go on this site on parcel F and fifty-eight fifty Shellmount were also analyzed in the cumulative condition, and I'll get to that in a minute. Uh, anyway, there are forty-five locations. Each of these little circles has a number in it, and it indicates the location number where they measured the wind in the wind tunnel. Uh, it's either a white circle if it's less than thirty-six miles per hour, or red if it's over thirty-six miles per hour. In the existing condition, there is one site on the east side of the railroad tracks at the base of the Emery Station West Building that measured over thirty-six miles per hour. Uh, the other forty-four locations were all less than thirty-six. With the, uh, parcel B project that has been approved by the Planning Commission, that red circle goes away, and all forty-five locations are now less than thirty-six miles per hour. Uh, this is with the cumulative, and you can see down here are these new buildings, uh, that are now included in the wind tunnel analysis. They do not change the results. There's still no locations exceeding thirty-six miles per hour. Um, this is with the applicant's proposed alternative. Also, there's still no locations exceeding thirty-six miles per hour. And then this is the parcel, the FDP, I'm sorry, the PDP hypothetical building. This building, uh, shape and massing was taken out of that illustrative PDP diagram, and they built a model showing what that would look like, and that results in five locations along Shellmount Street with winds exceeding thirty-six miles per hour. Now to the wind comfort conditions. Again, we still have the same forty-five locations, and again, I want to emphasize there is no threshold of significance identified for this in either the EIR or the conditions of approval. But for this analysis purpose, they looked at eleven miles per hour and said, you know, what would be more and what would be less than eleven miles per hour? If the dot is orange, it's over eleven miles per hour. If it's yellow, it's less than eleven miles per hour. So in the for, in the existing condition, for forty-five locations, twenty-one are less than eleven miles per hour and twenty-four exceed eleven miles per hour. Uh, looking at the FDP that was approved by the Planning Commission, the number that exceed eleven miles per hour, uh, reduces to, uh, fifteen, and actually, one of those is this blue dot over here that is now at, uh, less than seven miles per hour. And we have thirty locations that are now less than eleven miles per hour. With the cumulative, it goes up to eighteen locations that are over eleven miles per hour. And, uh, with the, uh, applicant's proposed alternative, we now have twenty-five locations over eleven miles per hour and nineteen that are less than eleven miles per hour. And just based on the configuration of the buildings, the blue, I mean, the yellow and orange dots kind of move around. And then this is, in the PDP condition, we actually have twenty-six locations, and for some reason, there's only a total of forty-three. There's a couple that I think were not measurable. So we now have twenty-six locations exceeding eleven miles per hour, which is more than any of the other situations. So the conclusion from this is the project does not result in any winds exceeding thirty-six miles per hour. Therefore, it complies with the conditions of approval related to wind. The conditions of approval, as I said, don't specify a wind speed threshold for wind comfort, but the project will result in pedestrian wind comfort conditions that are similar to existing conditions. The applicant's proposed alternative similarly would not have any locations exceeding thirty-six miles per hour and likewise would comply with the wind, the conditions of approval related to wind. Moving on to aesthetics, the applicant, I'm, I'm sorry, the appellant has highlighted several conditions of approval with which the project purportedly does not comply. I would note that design-related conditions are by nature subjective, they're not discreet, and compliance with them is not really a yes or no answer. It's really up to the decision-making body, in this case yourselves, to, to make the findings of whether or not it complies. Uh, staff believes that the project does comply with the conditions of approval on aesthetic grounds, and I'll give you some, uh, further information about that, but ultimately that's your call to decide if you believe that's true or not. Uh, one of the conditions is that the proposed structures shall adequately reference and be visually compatible with surrounding industrial buildings. There really aren't a lot of industrial buildings in this area. Uh, the only one, uh, that could be argued as industrial is the existing Public Market Building, which is a one-to-two-story masonry adaptive reuse project. Um, and the project's smokestack features and divided glass and metal window system are signature industrial-type design that reference the surrounding industrial buildings, that is, the existing marketplace. These are some pictures that are taken out of the approved FDP plan set that are, uh, basically surrounding building context pictures, and then this is a diagram of the project from the FDP plan set, and you can see the smokestacks and the, uh, divided glass and metal window system that are included in the proposed project. Um, another condition is to create streetscape vitality and enhance pedestrian experience through detailed treatment of building facades, including entryways, fenestrations, signage, vertical walls broken up with architectural detailing, protruding and recessed tower elements, step-back upper floors to provide appropriate high transitions to adjacent buildings, and through the use of carefully chosen building material, texture, and color. These are some details from the approved FDP plan set that illustrate the building materials, texture, and color, and the detailed treatment of the facade. You can see all of the various things, the metal columns and the tile and the trim and all of the different details of the facade articulation that are illustrated in the approved FDP plan set. And this is, uh, illustration from the same plan set that shows the streetscape vitality and pedestrian interest that would be created by the project. Another condition is that the design of building facade shall include sufficient articulation and detail to avoid the appearance of blank walls and box-like forms. Articulation has been a word that has kind of risen to the top here in, uh, these deliberations. And we note that the term articulation is not defined in the planning regulations, but the term does appear in the planning regulations in several places from which we can infer its meaning. As a variation in wall plane that creates visual interest and features that create shadow lines and reduce the appearance of an unblo- unbroken flat wall may be considered articulation. For example, in the section of the planning regulations that talks about significant structures, the term articulated is used to describe the significant features of five of the eighty-five, um, significant buildings that the City Council has designated. One of these is the Public Market West Building, whose significant features include articulated brick, pilasters, cornice, and parapet. Um, the FDP project's building base and storefront design provides articulation with the use of stone, metal, and glass at the ground level. Architectural details of the building facade include accent stone, metal trims, and metal-faced beams, stone columns and tile surfaces, glass windows and doors, blade signs and mounted lighting at the first level, and the top levels of the office and laboratory are articulated using an industrial-type window grid system. This is just one example of a significant structure that's been designated by the City Council, uh, that uses the term articulation. It was, its significant features are identified as including articulated brick, pilasters, cornice, and parapet. Uh, this is at the public market, and I would note that the building basically is a box. It's basically a brick box, but it's got this articulation in the brick and the pilasters and the cornice that are significant enough for the City Council to have determined this to be a significant structure. And these are, uh, this is a detailed drawing from the approved FDP plan set that illustrates the articulation that would occur with the proposed building, including the metal wall system, the window system, the glass curtain wall, uh, the various concrete features, and the storefront system here at the base. Uh, finally, all proposed new buildings shall be shown in detail. Towers and buildings along the railroad tracks should be articulated with treatments such as variations in building plane color and materials, balconies and trellises, to ensure that no visual wall is created along the railroad right-of-way. Project's four levels of concrete parking structure will each be articulated by art panels on the east and west elevations. In addition, the Planning Commission conditions of approval, as I previously said, require that the open parking on the north and south elevations should be screened with an aesthetically pleasing, pleasing treatment that is compatible with that of the east and west elevations. And since the applicant is proposing to use public art to satisfy a planning condition of approval, the City Council could add a condition of approval to the FDP if he chose to do so, requiring that the public art to be applied to the building be approved by the City Council prior to issuance of a building permit to confirm that it adds sufficient articulation to satisfy the requirements of the PUD conditions of approval. And as I previously noted, the applicant's proposed alternative plan set includes a statement that says the building provides a canvas for public art and will integrate the winning artist's concept with council participation on the east and west sides of the base. And this is, again, the drawing that shows where the public art would be put on the east and west elevations and the, uh, examples of the work of the seven artists that have been shortlisted for this work. So, in conclusion, concerning aesthetics, the project complies with the conditions of approval, in staff's view, related to aesthetics and the Planning Commission's view, related to aesthetics and design by successfully referencing surrounding industrial buildings, creating streetscape vitality and enhancing pedestrian experience through detailed treatment- detailed treatment of building facades, and through the use of carefully chosen building material, texture, and color, including sufficient articulation and detail to avoid the appearance of blank walls and box-like forms, ensuring that no visual wall is created along the railroad right-of-way through the use of public art on all building—on—the building facades. And the applicant's proposed alternative would result in similar aesthetic conditions to the project and likewise would comply with the conditions of approval related to design. And the third issue that the city council expressed concern about was building height. The conditions of approval specify the height of the various sites, but they do not specify how much of each site is subject to the various heights. This is in the condition—the written conditions of approval that are attached to the ordinance that approved this PUD. For the site that is now known as Parcel B, what the condition says is height, maximum height not to exceed one-hundred-and-twenty feet. Period. That's all it says. The diagrams in the PDP that indicate building height, as I previously said, are illustrative. They are not intended to be taken literally regarding building footprints. Now, this is the drawing that has been at issue. This is a—an excerpt of the larger PUD site plan, and specifically, this polygon here that shows the purported height limit on Parcel B. It says one-hundred-and-twenty feet, and the contention is that only that area is allowed to go up to one-hundred-and-twenty feet under the PDP. Staff believes that—again, this should not be taken literally, that it—this height limit applies to this entire site, and I want to now go through three points to illustrate why staff believes that is the case. First, here is the approved PDP site plan, which we went over before. Now, here is what all of the FDPs will look like once they're all built out. At first glance, they look pretty much the same. However, they're not the same, and I want to point out to you specifically what the differences are. First of all, if you look at this roadway right here and the ME building that was previously approved by the city council, the first FDP, Parcel D and Parcel C, and compare that to the PDP, you'll see that the roadway has been moved. It's now farther north than what's shown in the PDP. That resulted in the ME building footprint being smaller. It resulted in the Site B—or what was then known as the Theater Site—footprint being smaller. It resulted in the Parcel C footprint being larger. Also, there's not a bend in the street here anymore. So if you specifically look at Parcel D and C in the PDP, you can see that Parcel C is about half the size of Parcel D. Right? Now, if you look at the FDPs, now Parcel C and Parcel D are about the same size. In fact, Parcel C might even be a little bit bigger than Parcel D as a result of this road being moved and being reconfigured. Another change that occurred was that the bend in Shellmount Street here, as you can see the way it's actually been built and approved, is a sharper curve than what was shown in the PUD, in the PDP plan. This is a more gradual curve than what ended up being approved in the subdivision map and then in the FDP plans. That resulted in Parcel B ending up being a little bit shorter because the road now goes like this, and it cuts off the north part of Parcel B. Also, Parcel A here, as you can see in the PDP, the north end of the building on Parcel A actually connects to Parcel B, and there's no gap. In the approved FDPs, we have a gap between them, and the sub—the northern wall of Parcel A is actually over here, a little bit farther south than shown in the PDP. Parcel F really is academic; that doesn't change much between them. But for all of these reasons, this drawing and this drawing—which may look pretty similar—are not at all the same. Secondly, I want to talk specifically about Parcel D. I know that's not the subject of tonight's hearing, but I think it is informative to talk about. So if we zoom in on that, you can see this is from the site plan, the approved PDP site plan, and it shows a variety of different uses and masses on what we now call Parcel D, including a residential component on the north part that's supposed to be seventy-five feet tall, a residential tower at the southwest corner that's supposed to be one-hundred-and-fifty feet tall, and a retail podium that covers the southern half of the site with the tower on top of it that is only forty feet tall. And the bird's-eye view that is included in the approved PUD is this. This is where the seventy-five-foot-tall portion of that is. This is where the one-hundred-and-fifty-foot tower is. This is where the forty-foot retail podium is. The FDP that was actually approved for Parcel D looks like this. It is eighty feet tall all the way around. It has a podium that's about twenty-seven feet above ground in the middle. So the northern part of it is pretty similar, although five feet taller, than what this drawing shows. There's no tower over here on the southwest corner, and the southeast corner is not forty feet above grade, it's eighty feet above grade. When the Planning Commission approved this P—FDP, they were cognizant of this drawing in the PDP, and they looked at it and they said, "This substantially conforms. This building substantially conforms to this because this is illustrative. It's not intended to be taken literally." And the third point is moving on to Parcel B itself, back to this polygon that supposedly is the only area where the building can go one-hundred—over one-hundred-and-twenty feet. That would be this area right here. The FDP that was approved by the Planning Commission for Parcel B has a footprint that looks approximately like this. So clearly, it goes beyond that one-hundred-and-twenty-foot polygon. In the appellant's appeal letter, the options—the appeal options, 1 and 1A, that they included, had a footprint that would be approximately like this. Basically, they took the approved FDP building and moved the southern wall north. But I would note that this footprint also does not align with this polygon that supposedly is the only area where you can be over one-hundred-and-twenty feet. So it can't really be argued that this is a viable alternative to the project if the only area that's allowed to go one-hundred—over one-hundred-and-twenty feet is this polygon. So I think all of this is just to say that these PDP drawings are illustrative. They are not intended to be taken literally. So, conclusion about height, just to say it again, PDP diagrams are illustrative, not to be taken literally. At one-hundred-and-thirty-three—one-hundred-and-thirteen feet, the project conforms with the condition of approval, calling for a maximum height of one-hundred-and-twenty feet on Parcel B. The applicant's proposed alternative, which would now be one-hundred-and-twenty feet, also conforms to this condition of approval. So the overall conclusions of this analysis of the conformity of the project and the applicant's proposed alternative with the PUD, PDP, and the conditions of approval are that the project substantially conforms to the PDP, the project conforms to the conditions of approval specified by the city council in its approval of the PDP, and the applicant's proposed alternative also substantially conforms to the PDP and the conditions of approval. With that, I will conclude that we recommend, after holding a public hearing, that council provide direction to staff to prepare a resolution to either approve the commission's action upon a finding that all applicable findings have been correctly made and all provisions of the planning regulations have been complied with, or approve the commission's action but impose additional conditions and/or guarantees as you deem necessary to fulfill the purposes of the planning regulations, or disapprove the commission's action upon a finding that all applicable findings have not been made or all provisions of the planning regulations have not been complied with, and also pursuant to the planning regulations, you may continue the hearing and request a supplemental report from the Planning Commission. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to respond to any questions.
Any clarifying questions? Definition of illustrative? No? Okay. All right, then we're going to open up for the appellant's presentation. You will have fifteen minutes.
One quick—Rich Robbins, Wareham Development. Madam Mayor and members of the council, what are we discussing? Are we discussing the alternative or are we discussing the main body of our appeal?
Madam Mayor, I would like to ask if we could refer the appellant's question to the city attorney.
The proposal is the applicant's, and so I think that the proposal—that the question is really—I—I would suggest, Madam Mayor, that the question is really better posed to the applicant and what they are proposing.
Thank you. I concur. That's a question the applicant is going to have to address.
So do you—as a matter of protocol, do you want us to deal with just our appeal and not the alternative? That's the question on the table. I don't want to waste your time or our time if we're not talking about what we've appealed.
I—I—I have a request, Madam Mayor. If—are we—are we allowed to amend a part of the process to ask a question of the applicant? Mr. Attorney, we've approved a process, but if the council chose to give Mr. Robbins his time back and bring the applicant up for a single question, can we do that?
Yeah, if—yes, I think so. If the ca—if the council wanted to amend the procedures that you earlier adopted to—to do something else, you can certainly do that.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to propose that we invite the appellant to take a seat, and that I'd like to actually ask a preliminary question or two, and with the rest of the council's permission of the applicant.
Madam Mayor, we—we might recommend another approach, which would be to switch the order of the presentations, and you could vote on a new order of presentation, which would be to have the applicant make their presentation, ask clarifying questions, and then have the appellant make their presentation and ask clarifying questions.
So moved.
We've got a motion for Member Bowers and a second from Vice—uh, from Member Donahue. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Bowers.
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue.
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Potts.
Sure.
And Mayor Medina.
Aye. Okay. That's not coming out at the time for your presentation. We're just going to restart and have the applicant begin.
Thank you.
Can we get an exhibit?
Oh, okay. Okay.
Yeah, six-six.
Which one is it?
Uh, the top one there.
Right there?
Yep.
I have one, two.
I hate watching somebody else drop a laptop. They're doing it the right way.
Okay, who's going first?
Uh, the one on the left.
This one?
Nope, nope.
Oh, it's a PDF.
Yep.
Okay. So, in order to make it show, we'll do a control L. Just use the mouse.
Good evening, commissioners. It's good to see you again. When we first—as you all know, we've been at this project a long time, Parcel B specifically. We first came in front of the Planning Commission in December of two thousand and thirteen, and we've been working ever since to get the right project for this parcel and for the community. We feel that the FDP that was approved by the Planning Commission is the best project for that site and for the community, but having said that, we listened very intently at the last city council hearing that we had in October, and we listened to your concerns as well as the appellant's concerns, and so we took it upon ourselves to come up with an alternative that would—we felt—address those concerns. So our preference is for the project that is approved by the Planning Commission, but we've developed this alternative that we felt would meet the concerns of the council and the appellant. And so with that, I'd like to introduce our architect, Christopher Peasey, to run through some of the details on the alternative, and then we're going to invite up our wind consultant who will speak to a little more detail about the wind studies that we've prepared.
Thanks, Mark. Mayor and council members, it's a thrill to be here, part of this public process on Election Day. I want to thank Charlie for giving such a great presentation. I think he covered almost everything. We'll just make a few clarifying moments. We are here presenting, we think, not a different scheme, but this is a scheme that's revised based on your comments, based on concerns and comments from the appellant, and based on feedback that we've had, and really, a four-year-long process designing and redesigning for this particular site. We've tried to deliver a concept that achieves our longstanding project goals. We still have one-hundred-and-fifty thousand square feet of lab space. We still have ground floor line of commercial. We've got almost two-thirds of an acre of open—open areas. We've reduced the parking to five hundred spaces, which we still think is a little bit less than we'd like. How did we achieve this? Well, it's—you know, we've squeezed wherever we could. We've lowered the floor levels, as Charlie noted. We've got less parking. We've got a less efficient floor plate. It is definitely a compromised design, but we still think it could be a great project, and it would be a great contribution to the Public Market District and the city, and we hope you're the city council that can help sort of deliver the—the fifteen-year completion of the Public Market redevelopment. So I just want to highlight a couple very precise changes that were responses to mostly your concerns and concerns from the appellant, but also concerns that we've heard from several trips to the Planning Commission. We don't want to ignore their feedback, city staff, city agencies, people that we've been talking to for years. So first, massing and height, as Charlie mentioned. We heard that the building should closer reflect the step-back character of the PDP's original urban design, and we've sort of revised the massing to meet that exact character. It's also, as Charlie noted, very, very similar to the Warems' proposed alternative, and we were also achieving a planted terrace with this. We were also made aware of a concern that the building might be too much of a wall facing the street—facing the tracks. So we've measured, we've calculated. Our original FDP was still fifteen percent less than the PDP, which actually had a thousand-foot-long continuous building. Our revised alternative is now twenty-three percent less than Jeff Heller's original design, so we're pretty proud of that. We were made aware of a concern that the building should closer reflect the articulation strategy of the PDP, which basically had notched corners and notches at the middle. You see that on the bottom there, and we've basically revised it to match that same kind of strategy at all four corners and at the middle. And we're also—it was a big concern also from the Planning Commission that we didn't treat this project like it had a front and a back, but rather, our thinking was all four sides should really have an equivalent design. There's the same window kind of window pattern and fenestration facing east and facing west, and we've got the same kind of articulation on all four facades. Admittedly, the base is an open parking garage, just like the PDP, so that should not be a surprise to anybody. It's always been an open parking garage at the base. We do acknowledge that we're going to try to address it with some two-dimensional artwork surface treatment. We do know that parking has been a concern, not only for the city council but for several planning commissioners. Sometimes you said, "Why are you providing so much parking?" We still think we don't quite have enough, but we've reduced our parking area by ten percent from our original submission, and we do think that in the fifteen-year build-out for this project, we're doing—we're making great strides to providing—providing real use intensity that will boost transit demand. We're going to have an additional one thousand to twelve hundred new residents. We're going to have three hundred to five hundred new jobs, all while sort of decreasing the allocated parking for all of these uses. So we're going to be a real boost to the transit needs of this area. We've heard concerns about the nature of the public art process and how it will be integrated. Charlie's already touched on that, and I think the big thing is that City Center wants to engage the Planning Commission—pardon me, the city council—and engage you in that process. We do know that we're planning to have public art—something on the west facade at the bottom and something on the east facade as well, and this is part of the entire public art master plan for the Public Market, which has been approved as part of the DA. It's been approved by the Public Art Committee, who are empowered to make that decision. Nonetheless, we have those approvals. We still want to— We do know that we're planning to have public art, something on the west facade at the bottom, and something on the east facade as well, and this is part of the entire public art master plan for the Public Market, which has been approved as part of the DA. It's been approved by the Public Art Committee, who are empowered to make that decision. Nonetheless, we have those approvals. We still want to open it back up to you and hope to engage you in that process. And then finally, wind. We've heard concerns about windy conditions, wind hazards, and wind comfort. My colleague is about to come up and address those, but we do want to say that we've modeled the PDP, our January design, and our new design, and our January design and our new design both perform better than the original PDP, the original Jeff Heller master plan, and the key is that we've got open parking levels at the base, and that really allows the wind to move through the building in a better-performing way than in the PDP. And of course, we'll also have street trees and awnings, which will also help provide buffering and more comfort compared to the wind. And then here's the summary slide, which I'm happy to talk more about if you like, but it sort of highlights the design changes that we've made in response to all of your comments, comments from the appellant, and the longstanding comments and feedback we've had from city staff, agencies, and the public, people who are commenting at all of these meetings. And with that, I can turn it over to the wind study.
Good evening. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to talk about the wind here today. And I also want to thank Charlie. You did such a good job, and then I have nothing to add. My name is Han Ching Wu and from RWDI. I'm a partner there. I've been working in the company for 21 years. And we did five different configurations for this project, and A is existing as a baseline, and also we did the B, FDP, and then E is a new alternative. That's a preferred design. And also, we did the C and the D. Those two are PDPs for comparison purposes. If you look at the picture here I want to show you, that's our wind tunnel, one of the smaller wind tunnels involved just outside of Toronto. And in the wind tunnel, you can see there are roughness there, and then there are spires there. They are automatically controlled for different terrains. When the winds are coming from the water or from the city, they have different turbulence, different profiles, so this can be used to model those winds coming to the site. And then in wind engineering communities, and we all agree, wind tunnel is the best way to measure the wind speed, and then by far, it is much, much better than computer simulation or desktop analysis. And then many presenters talk about the positive features in configuration B and the configuration E here. One feature is the openness of the bottom part, which allow the wind going through, and that's one very important feature, positive feature for control of the wind. And the second feature here is the distance between the proposed Parcel B and the existing building to the west. The small distance between those two buildings actually allow less wind coming down to the ground level when you compare to those two PDPs. I'm going to show you later in plan. You can see it. And we measured the wind speed at the 45 locations, and some locations are occupied by different configurations, and sometimes you see 43 or 44. So in that nature, when you get to the measurement, you combine those speeds with long-term data from Oakland Airport for the last 30 years, and then we're able to calculate the wind speed and also the frequencies. And when we get the wind speed and the frequencies, we have to compare with the standards, and here we use wind hazard criterion 36 miles per hour. This is in the EIR, and then also required by CECL. So we use this one as a criterion for the wind hazard. And then we also use wind comfort. As Charlie mentioned, wind comfort is not required, but we use it for reference purposes, only for information to show here. And then for all the wind consultant that I talked to, and we all agree, this 11 miles per hour, which is used in the city of San Francisco, is too strict, and it's very conservative, and very difficult for the wind speed in this area to meet that criterion for wind comfort. So that's why all the wind study we do in this area, we focus on the wind hazard. We focus on 36 miles per hour. We don't pay too much attention to the 11 miles per hour criteria. And I put all the five configurations in the table. If you look at it, on the left side is a safety. This is exactly the same as what Charlie just presented, and then the most important number is this column here, the total number of location that exceed 36 miles per hour. For existing condition, we find at least one location exceed that criterion, and for FDP and then also the new alternative, it is zero. Zero location exceed that criterion. And for two PDPs, it was five and eight locations that exceed that criterion. And then on the right side is for wind comfort. As I said, this is for reference purposes, for information purposes here. You can see, on average, among those 45 locations measured, the average wind speed is 12. When we go to FDP, it becomes 11, so actually reduce the wind speed. And then when we talk about the new alternative, it's 12, so it's the same as existing, but those two PDPs, they are 13, so they are higher than the existing condition. And Charlie showed this already, so I just go quickly by those four configurations. Five configurations for existing, we get the one location, and then for the second one, zero, and then five, eight, and zero again. So I just put those five together here, if you can see it. Existing here is one location here, and then for those two, FDP and then also new alternative, it's zero, and then the other two PDPs, they are five and eight here. And then I said, the positive feature is, one is openness at the bottom, and the second one is the distance. For the PDPs, because you get a larger distance, so you allow more wind coming down to the ground level, and then because the bottom part is solid and then the wind has no way to go, so it has to go around the street. So that's why you get those red dots. And then we compare to other two, because winds can go under the building, around the building, so the wind speeds are not that strong. So that's a reason. And also, we look at the comfort, because I don't want to repeat what Charlie said, but that's just focus on the small area here between Parcel A and the Parcel B. We measured six locations there, five, six, seven, eight, and then 15 and 16. I also put that in the table for all five configurations, existing PDP and the PDP and then new alternatives, for all those six locations. If you look at the average number, we don't want to go into too details, look at the average number. For existing, it was 14.8 miles per hour for the wind speed. You see, 10% of the time, and then FDP and the alternative G is actually reduced.
That is your time.
Yeah, with the new one, has the lowest wind speed. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, clarifying questions from the council?
I have one.
Member Batters, for the...
Not for the wind study to start. Did you have one, Scott? You want to go?
Not for wind.
Okay.
I have one for the applicant.
Timing questions.
Hi, Mark. My question is, there's this alternative proposal, and I think for the benefit of the council and also the appellant and for this process, it's helpful to know if this alternative proposal is something that CCRP is putting forth as an alternative FDP. Are you proposing this would be a new FDP that you would like us to consider as that, or in lieu of the current one? Because I heard you say two things. I heard you say you prefer the one that was approved by the Planning Commission. I understand that, but the council needs to know where you stand on this.
Well, where I stand is that we prefer the FDP that was approved, but I would like the council to tell us which plan they prefer, because that's why we put together the alternatives. We heard comments from the council and from the appellant, and so we made some adjustments to try to meet what we thought we heard. And so what I'd really like to hear is either the council tell us we like the FDP, or we like the alternative with this change or that change, or that's really what I'd like to have happen.
So are you saying that you'd be willing to submit the alternative as an FDP?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other, can you stay up here just for a second? Are there any other clarifying questions?
Yes, I have one for your architect. You may not know this dimension, but the new plaza in the alternative plan has a height off the ground, and there's trees illustrated on it and a green patch. What is the height differential between this proposed new plaza and the existing public plaza across the tracks?
The proposed plaza is at elevation about 60 feet above ground, and the plaza across the tracks, it might be something in the 25 to 35-foot range.
Okay, thank you.
Any other clarifying questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you. Now we will hear from the appellant.
Madam Mayor, members of council, thank you for the clarification. Rich Robbins, Waram Development. Waram's been developing in his own property in this town for more than 40 years. We have never, ever appealed before, forgetting what has been said for the previous 11 months. Our purpose was solely for the betterment and quality of life issues. We worked diligently with TMG during the original process, and with respect, and it was a great presentation, Charlie, there were key critical elements that didn't get discussed tonight, which was undulation, staying as far away from creating a massive wall, given the fact that Emeryville had two big hurdles to overcome over the years. One, it was left off Bart, and we built a railroad station. Two, most importantly, the crossing between east and west in Emeryville has divided a city for many, many years. So this was an incredibly important crossing to us, quality of life issue, not to mention the railroad station, et cetera. I want to say that absolutely we feel the applicant has come a long way in the alternative that he's proposed, but given the fact that we worked so hard with the conditions of approval, which we still feel the FDP and the PDP is not in conformance, and strongly feel that way, that with those alternatives, the key's going to be the devil in the details. And by that, what I mean is there are several issues that need to be confirmed and memorialized in a way where there's absolute clarity for the betterment of everyone involved, even the applicant. But we want to congratulate the attempt and the effort being made to bring an alternative forward. With that, I'll turn the floor over to Matt Francois.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Matt Francois, on behalf of Waram Development, thank you for your time tonight. We're here on the appeal of the final development for Marketplace Parcel B. You've seen the main contentions, and I think Charlie did a nice job summarizing those, which are, in our view, the FDP does not substantially comply with the PDP. It doesn't conform with aesthetics or wind conditions. The city cannot lawfully approve the FDP prior to conducting subsequent CECL review. We still maintain the FDP overparks a site by hundreds of spaces, and we call on you and your colleagues to require that the FDP be redesigned to conform to the PDP. As to the first point, as you know, the PDP is the zoning for the site, so if the FDP does not comply with the plans and conditions embodied in the zoning here, the city cannot lawfully approve it until the zoning is changed. The FDP clearly and irreconcilably conflicts with the PDP. Condition 1B states that the future final development plan shall substantially comply with those approved plans approved by, prepared by Heller Manus. Condition 1A3, which is not up there, also says that the FDP cannot exceed the height or the general massing shown on the approved plans. You have a letter from Mr. Heller dated from May that indicates the FDP significantly diminishes the PDP in various ways. He says, Mr. Heller writes, that the length of the proposed building is unprecedented. The building rises vertically from the street without any meaningful relief or articulation, makes a canyon out of Shellmount Street, and so on. So here's a key figure in an excerpt that staff presented from the approved PDP plans. It's important to note that this particular figure is not illustrative. It's the actual approved PDP plans, and essentially, this is saying that the applicant has to color within these lines. This is what was approved for 120 feet, not the entire parcel here, only within those lines. And Condition 2E states that the building heights shall not exceed the height shown here, so we strongly disagree that you can allow 120 feet across the entire building when your own condition said you can only allow it in this 282-foot portion here. If the applicant wants to color outside those lines, of course, it can apply to amend the PDP. I did want to reply to one point respectfully that staff raised, was that these height limits were ignored previously. We don't believe that's the case. It's sort of irrelevant. Parcel D is not before you tonight. Parcel B is. And Parcel D, you essentially allowed, or the Planning Commission did, allowed an average of 80 feet across a site that allowed for 150 and 75 feet, and 40 feet for commercial, which wasn't proposed in that final development. So this here shows you where, in these red boxes here, shows how this is exceeding what is allowed by the PDP. And to put it in a little more stark contrast, the length of this building, and Mr. Heller got at this in his comment letters, is almost 470 feet in length. If you turn Pacific Park Plaza on its side, this building is longer than that 30-story tower is high, and not by a little, by more than 130 feet, actually 150 feet. Turning to the FDP does not conform with the aesthetics conditions, you have, conditions were imposed on the PDP that the FDP was supposed to create streetscape vitality through detailed treatment of building facades, vertical walls broken up with architectural detailing, and stepped-back upper floors to provide appropriate height transitions. The building facades in the FDP do not contain detailed treatments, nor have the walls been broken up with architectural detailing. There are no appropriate step-down in heights between the proposed 113-foot structure and the much lower structures approved on Parcel A. You also have conditions that say, "Design of the building facades shall avoid the appearance of blank walls or box-like forms," that "Buildings along the railroad tracks shall be articulated to ensure that no visual wall is created." And I agree with staff that that term is not particularly defined in your zoning, uh, planning regulations, but it actually is defined in your, in your general plan, and it refers to building design and form, and gives as examples of articulation, height step-backs, varied building heights and setbacks, recessions and projections. That's at pages 523 to 524 of the general plan. The project is a rectangular box. There were Planning Commission members who testified to that effect. It's 470 feet long, again, 150 feet longer than the height of Pacific Park Plaza. The east facade is not articulated with variation in building planes, colors, and materials as required, and in direct contradiction of your conditions, the FDP creates a visual wall along the railroad right-of-way. And just going back to those conditions, I wanted to point out that nowhere in the conditions that were imposed on this, requiring articulation and requiring no box-like forms, does it say that public art can serve as a mitigation or get around what these clear prescriptive terms provide. Onto the wind mitigation measure. Again, we respectfully disagree with staff. Staff read from... of blank walls or box-like forms." That buildings along the railroad tracks shall be articulated to ensure that no visual wall is created. And I agree with staff that that term is not particularly defined in your zoning, uh, planning regulations, but it actually is defined in your, in your general plan, and it refers to building design and form, and gives as examples of articulation, height step-backs, varied building heights and setbacks, recessions and projections. That's at pages 523 to 524 of the general plan. The project is a rectangular box. There were planning commission members who testified to that effect. It's 470 feet long, again, 150 feet longer than the height of Pacific Park Plaza. The east facade is not articulated with variation in building planes, colors and materials as required. And in direct contradiction of your conditions, the FDP creates a visual wall along the railroad right-of-way. And I, just going back to those conditions, I wanted to point out that nowhere in the conditions that were imposed on this, requiring articulation and requiring no box-like forms, does it say that public art can serve as a mitigation or get around what these clear prescriptive terms provide. Onto the wind mitigation measure. Again, we, we respectfully disagree with staff. Staff read from the draft EIR mitigation measures and impacts. The final EIR also addressed this issue and specifically referred to the office and the residential towers on the Shellmount site, office tower being Parcel B, residential being Parcel A. And they said here in Wind, Wind 1, that the, those building sites shall be subject to review by a qualified wind consultant, who was supposed to examine those buildings for all the aesthetic conditions that we just talked about. And there's a specific provision in that measure that says, "Avoid narrow gaps between buildings." Unfortunately, this, this FD, not only was the building not evaluated for its use of such features, and it doesn't contain those features, but directly contrary to this condition, the FDP creates a narrow gap between buildings where winds will be accelerated. The expert wind consultant, CPP, we have Anke Lyer Bout here tonight, and she's available to answer any questions you have, might have, concludes that the project will significantly increase ground level winds between Parcels A and B, making the area unsuitable for typical pedestrian use. Wind speeds at one-third of the locations, this is an excerpt from CPP's study, at one-third of the locations studied, will exceed the specified comfort criteria. And these include some key pedestrian areas, including right here, where there was supposed to be restaurant and retail and an active pedestrian area. You've got the outdoor plaza area here, south of Emery Station West. Then you've got some areas that were supposed to be active for retail and pedestrian up here. So these are key pedestrian areas that are going to be unsuitable for pedestrian use. The applicant claims it can ignore these impacts, saying they're not environmental impacts. But if one looks at the EIR, it very clearly and unmistakably studied both pedestrian comfort and safety. That's, that's referenced multiple times in both the draft and the final EIR. And it's important to point out that that mitigation measure that was referenced previously was imposed to ensure pedestrian comfort. And of course, under relevant SEQA case law, an agency can't ignore a project's significant environmental impacts simply because it complies with a stated standard of significance. And that's the East Sacramento Partnership case for a livable city. Many of these items that we had talked about before dovetail with SEQA issues as well. The project's been drastically changed from what was approved in the PDP, and you've got ignorance of aesthetics and wind mitigation measures, which were important even with the PDP, and are even more important now. So these significant changes require subsequent environmental review before the FDP can be considered. We're also concerned, and remain concerned, about the project over-parking the site by hundreds of spaces under current code. In support of an amendment to eliminate the grocery store, the grocery store was mentioned a few times tonight, but that, there's been a proposal to eliminate the grocery store as part of Parcel C. The applicant testified to the planning commission that the site's parking demand was more like an urban environment than a suburban one. Yet the applicant is proposing to park this site as if it were a suburban mall, which it's not. We ask that you require the applicant to provide a parking demand survey, as actually is required by the conditions of approval 2E6. And in conclusion, I don't need to tell you that this is a, a signature project on a signature site. And it deserves to be designed in a manner that comports with its importance to Emeryville. The city, Wareham, and others have spent considerable time, energy, and effort integrating the city from east to west to create a true city center, and are very concerned that the design of this project threatens to undermine those decades of hard work by creating a super block that essentially turns its back on east Emeryville. Staying faithful to your high standards is critical to ensuring the future success of both the Marketplace and the Emery Station developments. You don't get a second chance with a site like this. It's a legacy site that if it's developed as proposed, I honestly believe you'll regret having approved. We thank you for your consideration of Wareham's views on this important matter. I and other members of the Wareham team are standing by and happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Any clarifying questions from the council? Yes, Member Batters.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just have a few, um, few things. The, you mentioned the letter from Mr. Heller about the unprecedented length of the building, but didn't he design the PDP?
He did, that's correct.
And that was a, Parcel A and B were just one long, uniform building.
Yeah, and so the, the difference though being that that had, the height element on the PDP obviously was, the 120 feet that was shown was only for 282 feet. What's being proposed is 470 feet at the maximum height, so...
So he was taking issue with the height, with the length, because he made the unprecedented thousand-foot wall, really. But you're arguing about the number of levels above those first three floors? That's what your argument is?
Well, I, I think you have to look, yes, I think you have to look at it in context that he wasn't proposing a 10-story building across the entire site. He was proposing that there be pop-ups or a tower, which are referred to in the EIR, for a specified length in the center of the site, and not across the entire length of the site.
Okay, um, couple other questions. I mean, I, I guess I'm struggling with a couple of things you said, because when we saw the wind study, I haven't heard you refute the wind analysis that was provided earlier. The original PDP was the one that created all the hazards on Shellmount Street. So his design, I'm just having an issue with his letter and your use of his letter, because his design actually created the wind problem, is what it looks like initially.
I'm happy to have the, the wind consultant come up and speak to her.
Sure.
And just to remind the council, as you know, that wind study was provided on Friday. We actually didn't receive any notice from the city of it. I found it on the website, provided it to the consultant. The consultants reviewed it and flown out from...
Of course, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Vice Mayor Pat?
Yeah. I specifically asked about that, and I was told we did notify you. So I take umbrage at sort of saying staff didn't notify you when they clarified that they had. Is that accurate?
That's correct. We sent notification to the parties, to both, both parties, on Friday, when we received the wind study. We provided a, an email to both council for the parties that the administrative record had been updated to include the updated wind study.
I apologize. I didn't receive it, and neither did my client. We did receive the proposed alternative. So I wasn't, if staff sent it and we didn't receive it, then that was a mistake on our end. But we, I didn't get it. I did get the proposed alternative.
So we made a good faith effort.
And I, I appreciate that, and staff has. I, I just didn't get that.
Yeah.
So I, before she comes up, 'cause I'll have a question. But the last thing, is there was a slide, if you could go back, you have one slide where you have a quote from the PDP, and I can't find it, so I want you to be able to tell me exactly where it is. Middle one. Oh, you're right, sorry.
Was it one of the conditions?
I'll show you when you get to it. It's the one you used to justify that the condition actually covers this building. And, because they made the argument it only covers the Shellmount building. You had the one saying the wind, uh, this one here, that very first, that very first paragraph, where is that paragraph?
So that is both in the final EIR at either page 130 or 131, and in your approved mitigation monitoring and reporting program.
Can you, while she comes up to answer the other question, can you get me the exhibit number? Because I'm looking at 148 exhibits, and I'd love to know where exactly you found that. This is the paragraph you relied on to argue that this apply, this area applies to more than just Parcel A. You're saying it applies to A and B.
Yeah, and the text before that mitigation measure makes it clear they're talking about the office and the residential towers.
Yeah, that's, that's what I want to see. I want to see where that is. Okay, thank you. So I'll ask my last question, Madam Mayor, is for the other consultant.
Yes, let's bring up the wind consultant.
Okay. Can you put up her wind slides, we're looking at it?
Oh, that'd be great. Can you navigate that?
Yeah, sure, I'll try.
Yeah.
Um, that was the wind impacts?
Yes.
Yeah, that looks good.
That might be...
Perfect, we'll start here.
If you, yeah, if you just, I don't need to see all these. If you go scroll down to the one where there's, that one.
That one.
So that's the original PDP, right? And so their study actually shows that the original PDP, which was designed by Mr. Heller, who's written a letter in support of the Wareham position, actually created a majority of the wind hazards. Is that, do you agree that that's the case?
I do not agree with that.
Okay.
So if I scroll back over to the photos of the wind study, you can see that the FDP was simulated with the open parking garage, as well as the alternative design, that's configuration E. But the PDP was simulated with a closed facade. So that creates, um, a, a much more adverse wind environment. And I'm sure that I've heard that in this meeting, that the PDP was also supposed to have the open garage.
Okay, so you're saying...
So it's not an apples, it's not an apples-to-apples comparison here, because for both PDP configurations, this was simulated as closed.
So C and D should have the same openings B and E have, is what you're saying?
That's correct. And if we're comparing, uh, configuration C and configuration E on the south side, those building portions are almost exactly the same. So I would, from a wind perspective, expect the exact same results.
Okay, so you're saying C and E would be the same findings, more or less?
C and E on the south side. The north side of the building's different, but that south side should be exactly the same.
Okay, thank you. Madam Mayor, may I bring the other wind consultant up just to respond to that briefly and then be done with my questions?
Um, actually, while I've got her, I had a question for her real quick. Can you come back up?
Oh, sure thing, yeah.
So we don't play back and forth.
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
Um, on, we only had one slide that I really saw of your analysis. Did you use wind tunnels or computer modeling?
That was just the consulting piece, so that was experience-based, just based on building heights and distances between buildings.
Yes. Member Martinez?
So, um, you're saying that C and E ostensibly would be the same between, um, in that corridor?
Between Parcels A and B, yes.
Um, even though they're a different distance?
Uh, there's about close enough. There's a, there's a road between, and then we have the stepped-up from, that goes from open parking to tower. They're close enough that...
But you, you're accounting for the difference between, um, that, you know, the pathway is different between B and E. It's gotten bigger.
Oh, no, I'm, I'm talking about the south side of the building, just the gap between Parcels A and B.
You're using, I mean, the letters that you're using on the slides are confusing about the parcel.
Oh, okay.
So, yes, you're just... Instead of saying B and E, just be like the PDP, which is the proposed alternative? That's what you're asking?
I'm, I'm asking, um, between the, the PDP stepped down and the, um, the alternate G, the alternate.
Right.
So you're saying that the wind conditions would be the same?
On, on the south side of the building, yes.
On the south side of the building, between those two.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Can you bring up your, uh, consultation picture?
Sure.
Hope I labeled that correctly.
Which presentation was that?
Far right.
This one.
Slide 12.
Yep.
Perfect, thank you.
So it's that gap between Building A and the other one. So their wind tunnel study showed that there's not significant wind there. Are you saying that's inaccurate or accurate?
Um, we're discussing significant wind on a comfort level, on our haz, or a hazard level. On the comfort level, there was, um, exceedance shown in the RWDI report. On the hazard level, there were none.
If I recall correctly, the, with the building as proposed, the FDP, the wind level in that area actually was lower than it is currently. Am I, you know, so, no, I know that.
Right, but we're still exceeding the comfort.
And so you're saying that, but you're, you're implying that there's going to be an increase in the wind there.
Right, and that's what we did in our initial consulting. We didn't account for the openness of the parking garage, um, because part of the parking garage might be covered in cars. Let's say it's full of SUVs. The porosity of the parking garage will go down. The other point would be the art that is planned to be covered along the side of the parking garage may also reduce the porosity of that garage, so we, not allowing as much flow through. So if it was modeled that way in the wind tunnel, I'm expecting different results as well.
Okay.
So your analysis was based on a solid building structure with no porosity for wind?
Yeah, not, not as sufficient as, as, as it was modeled. I think it was modeled almost 50% open. But I would have to look at the photos again.
Okay. Thank you. And we'll bring up the, um, previous wind consultant to reply.
Thank you. So my, my first question is the one I had at the end of the last set of questions, which was the response going back, and we don't need to keep putting the slides up, but the, the modeling you did with models that are solid and do not have contemplate open space underneath, do you want to respond to that and why you chose to do that?
Yeah, we made the model based on the joints received from my client, and maybe you can explain this better. If you look at the approved FDP, on the western side is all solid.
Can we put that on the...
Yeah.
Oh, can we put that on the overhead, actually?
Sure.
That way the audience can see it as well.
So this was in, um, the document that we submitted, and it's, um, a framing of Jeff Heller's PDP master plan. Um, and, you know, as Charlie was talking about the heights, you can see that the back zone, which is the light gray zone, that's the open parking. I don't think that's disputed. The front, the, the zone that faces Shellmount Street is very clearly screened with commercial uses, which are enclosed, solid. So the direction we gave to our wind consultant, you know, looking at Jeff Heller's exhibit, was that there was retail facing Shellmount, so that was solid.
I, I think there's a drawing that we received that shows exactly the, there's a drawing that shows that, that we received, that the original PDP had solid towards Shellmount because it was all developed out.
Did your, did your modeling then of the alternative proposal and the current FDP that's on appeal, did that contemplate or include the two floors of ground retail that are west-facing on Shellmount Street? Or did you have it open aired through the whole thing from ground up? So you had, you then also had a solid facade on your model for the first, the first...
For the ground.
The ground-level retail, okay.
Vice Mayor?
And then to the other wind consultant's point, did you take into consideration, as you did your wind tunnel study, the fullness of the garage and/or any art that would be in front of the openings?
We didn't model car inside of the garage.
Yeah, use the microphone.
Please use the microphone.
We, we modeled it open.
Okay.
With, yeah, we didn't model cars inside.
Perfect, okay, thank you.
Any other follow-up questions?
I have a question for, um, the appellate, actually.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Francois? So, um, you cited a case, I'd love to get the, the name of that again. And I just wanted to ask, um, if you believe that the EIR requires that mitigations bring wind conditions down to at or below comfort levels?
Yeah, so the, the case is the East Sacramento Partnership for a Livable City versus the City of Sacramento case. And in that case, the city had a general plan policy that indicated level of service E or F conditions were acceptable in the central core area of the city. The EIR for a major residential project relied on that policy and said, "Look, level of service E or F are acceptable, therefore no significant impact." Because that was in their general plan, and that's what the EIR relied on as a threshold. And the court said, "If an opponent raises a fair argument that there may be impacts despite compliance with a threshold, a city errs in not analyzing and addressing those impacts." So we all know that level of service E and F are bad conditions. This EIR in the Sacramento case tried to paper over it and said, "No, they're fine because our general plan says, as a policy matter, we allow level of service E and F in the central core."
So what's the correlation in this case?
The correlation in this case is that, well, first of all, we dispute that the EIR solely used hazards as a criterion. It, the EIR looked at both safety, or, which is, would be hazards, and comfort, which would be the comfort criterion.
But we don't have a correlating policy that we're relying upon?
Well, what you have, though, is information presented by both RWDI and CPP indicating that there's an impact based on the comfort criteria. So there's an impact there, even under the FDP, to 15 locations, including some key So there's an impact there, even under the FDP, to 15 locations, including some key pedestrian areas that are not being mitigated. Because the statement is, "Those are only for informational purposes, so, you know, don't look behind the curtain." But CEQA, you have to look behind the curtain, even if it's not in the EIR as a stated threshold.
Okay, thank you.
I have follow-up to that, if I may. So I appreciate, as a lawyer, I appreciate the legal argument on this, and I just want to, I want to vet it a little further. Thank you for those very good questions, Councilmember Martinez. I think my follow-up questions are, on that point, do you agree with the prior, two things. First, do you agree with the prior statements by RWDI's wind consultant that 11 miles per hour is a wind comfort threshold is extremely conservative? And if not, what would you propose the threshold be? Because here, you're using, to her earlier question, the corollary is there was a standard in Sacramento where there's levels E and F, but they're an established standard that the city had adopted. We have no adopted standard, right? And there's a debate that was voluntarily offered before your argument, it was even presented, which is 11 is regarded as kind of a arbitrary or not a very friendly or conservative number, you know, that cities couldn't really use in the Bay Area. And the fact that our city and many other cities don't use wind comfort may reflect that that's not a relied-upon threshold or standard. So I'm wondering what your argument is on that, is my first question.
So San Francisco has adopted that standard, is in their planning code. So there's an entity that does embrace that standard and say it's an established standard. The fact that it may be conservative, I'm not in a position to judge that, I'll let the wind consultant opine on that, but I would just say CEQA's intended to be conservative. Look at the worst case, assume the worst case, don't, you know, look for the easy out, which here is the 36 mile per hour hazard criterion.
So would you, my other question, which would be for you then, I guess, is Wareham has built a lot of buildings in this city, and some might argue that some of those buildings may have created wind comfort issues that exceed 11 miles per hour. So are you suggesting that if a PDP or a future conditions of approval are approved on a building with Wareham, that we should then apply the same standard to them, and if it creates a wind standard over 11, we should deny that building?
Yeah, well, I wouldn't say that, but I would say that there should be one standard-
I didn't think you would, which is why I want you to tell me what you would do.
I think there should be a uniform standard that applies to everyone. I don't think that it should just apply to the applicant. And it should be that if, it's not, I mean, it goes against the grain of CEQA to say, "We're just evaluating something for informational purposes." The whole purpose of the law is to provide information to you and the public about what potential impacts are. And that was done here, and you have that, and now it's, you and your final EIR said, "Do something about it if it doesn't, if it exceeds comfort." That's a whole reason wind mitigation measure one was imposed. And the reference to that, Councilmember Bowders, is pages 877 to 878 of the administrative record. It's also referenced in your environmental-
Fill out the exhibit number for that.
I got you, one second.
I think it's tab three.
877.
And if I'm off on that, I'll get you the correct number. It's also referenced in your environmental checklist from December of 2018. So staff in December was saying that measure applied to the project and references that mitigation measure. I haven't found that in the record yet, but I'll look for it and get you a site.
877 and 878, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any other clarifying questions? Will we allow him to peruse this section? No, I think we can pause a second.
You can go for it, it's not going to be a question.
All right, then, if that's the end of clarifying questions, what we're going to do is open the public hearing. How this is going to work is there is an organized presentation by a group or a spokesperson. You will have 10 minutes. Otherwise, individuals will have three minutes to speak. So is there an organized presentation by a group happening? Just let me know now. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing at 9:23. If you'd like to comment, please comment up, you have three minutes for individuals.
Again, I think an important issue has been missing. When I brought up the aerodynamics of the building there, my intent, in which I did mention that, was that as a flyer, if I would have to fly in between the building there, I would have to be confronted with turbulence instead of a wind, like we have, a wind velocity, like we have in a venturi, that we experiment in laboratory. Here, I was trying, when I brought that up, I was trying to make the city here a leader in having the building aerodynamics, cutting all the sharp edges. It's still rectangular box. You cannot fly between that, and you cannot go in rescue with an helicopter. If you have something tragic happening between there, you would have to go with an ambulance. You cannot go in helicopter, because if there is any wind, it'll be dangerous, and helicopter pilot will say, "Sorry, I'm not going down there." And this is exactly what I was trying to bring up here. You didn't understand. I was trying to bring aerodynamics, aerodynamics to the building, in order we have to shut the corner. Instead of having a pickup truck, you have to have a smooth car, like, I don't want to see a sport car, because you cannot live in it. But you can have a van instead of a pickup truck or bread-delivery truck, you know? And this is, this is a real big mistake. I don't care about the detailed PD fee, or you call it, you know? You miss the point. You miss here that you have an opportunity to make buildings that are aerodynamics, like a jumbo jet, or something like that, in which the wind speed will have very little effect. Here, you concentrate having 11 miles per hour, 26 miles, it's all hypothetical there, you know? But try to fly between those buildings, I bet you will never do it. Thank you.
We will promise jetpacks.
Hello, I'm Betsy Cooley, resident. I would just like to offer my preference. I would prefer the alternative with the different, the varying heights. I think that aesthetically, it is more appealing. But in addition to that, one of my concerns has been the walkway over the railway, because when I've been on that, I've walked across it a number of times, and my recollection is it's always windy up there. And I worked in the federal building in San Francisco and the one in Oakland, and they have terrible wind tunnel problems next to each building. And it's really frightening. On a windy day, there are times when you see people actually holding on to posts because they're, you know, you're afraid you're going to be blown into traffic, or it's just really extremely unpleasant. But I think that the public market, the restaurants there are going to depend on people coming from, you know, other parts of the city. There really isn't a convenient way to walk across. The other walkway close to that is right alongside the Powell Street, and it's below the level of the street. Nobody can see you except people in the next-door building nearby. You don't have pedestrians walking by, you don't have, because the cars can't see you. It's just, I think, considered by most people that I know to be a really dangerous walkway. And a couple of times, I've started to go, I've walked across it a couple of times, a couple of times I've thought of going, and I get to it, and I see, and I see that at the other end, I can't see whether there's anybody there or not, and I know that there isn't going to be anybody around to help me if there is a problem. So I think that, I think that having varying levels would help to mitigate the wind created. Because I think that a building that size along the railway, I think it's got to create a wind tunnel. I mean, I'm not an expert, but that's just my experience with other buildings in other locations. So anyway, that would be my preference.
Thank you.
Hi, Nora Collins from Avalon Bay. Here on behalf of supporting CCRP and both of their approval, both of their proposed plans, we are, as you know, have, Charlie mentioned, have opened up parcel D, targeting opening of parcel C early next year, and are really excited about the opportunity to come and bring parcel A to Emeryville in the next couple of years. But we can't do that until parcel B gets built, because we are waiting on, right now, parcel A needs to remain a parking lot. So we'd like to bring more housing to Emeryville, we'd like to do that sooner rather than later, and would like one of these buildings approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, thank you, guys. My name is Damon Sandberg, I own Pig and a Pickle Barbecue in Emeryville Public Market. I'm not a developer, obviously, or architect or engineer, or win, you know, scientist, but I have been paying attention to this since I started watching this project two years ago. I'm sure both developers could go back and forth for years with their resources, but my perspective is, as small business owner, we've come here, we've invested a lot of our time, a lot of our money here. We would like to see the development get finished, so we can get the jobs, people here, to support the businesses we've brought here. I do feel that I've seen that CCRP has made a great deal of effort in the last year or so, at least in my opinion, to, you know, mitigate some of the thoughts that Wareham had brought up. Specifically, I remember a year ago, hearing about the sightline from the other building and the building spaces. I think they addressed that. I would just like to see a decision come sooner rather than later, so all of those of us who have, you know, come here with our businesses can, you know, keep on going. And not to bring up the little white elephant in the room from before this year, we approved the 1630 minimum wage. We need the density, we need the jobs to pay for that now. Obviously, that's not going anywhere, I'm fine with that, but we got to have the support, you know, for the surrounding economy to pay for all that, so we strive. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Maureen Puttner, and I'm here to speak on behalf of a couple of the other owners of the Food Hall establishment. And reading prepared statements, they couldn't be here tonight, but, so, from one owner of Minibells to whom it may concern, my name is Ferny McPherson, chef and owner of Minibells Soul Movement. I've been an entrepreneur for eight years, started a small catering food truck that employed three people into a brick-and-mortar establishment, and now employs nine people inside of Public Market Emeryville. This letter is in support of life, the Life Science Building. A project will bring over 700 new employees to Public Market as the community continues to evolve. This building would be a great addition for the Food Hall and the community. Please consider this project, as it will be a great addition for residents and the business owners of Emeryville. And the second statement is from the owner of longtime business, Wazwan Indian Cuisine, who says, "We have been operating our restaurant, Wazwan, in Emeryville for 35-plus years. With the steady increase in price of food, labor, and rent, we need every customer we can get to keep our restaurant a viable business. Having additional workers in the area will hopefully trickle down to our restaurant and can be the difference between breaking even or laying off an employee. We hope you will approve the new facility and allow for more potential customers for the Public Market." From Manak She Singh, owner of Wazwan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I think Councilmember Bowders just kind of got this whole question here in a nutshell, when he asked the Wareham representative, "Will you hold Wareham to the same standard in future Wareham projects?" And the answer from Wareham was, "No, we will not be held to the standard that we're asking the applicant to be held to." Essentially, that's what he said. So, you know, it's sort of audacious, but that is what we've come to expect from Wareham, audaciousness, Rich Robins and Wareham Development. You know, this is sort of like a clash of the titans, it's like one billionaire developer versus another one, so, you know, it's like, you're kind of like loathe to take sides. And let's be perfectly honest here, let's not mince words, everybody associated with this here tonight is terrible. City Council and the city, the staff, terrible. I mean, there's not going to be any locally-serving retail on this, associated with this site B for, from city center realty. There's not going to be any, the retail is going to be a total disappointment, everybody knows that. And also, Wareham and city center have been, you know, horrible, bad players. I mean, both of them have made a mockery of our noise ordinance, they both, like, violated it on numerous occasions. But let's be honest here, it's Wareham is the problem here. Everything, we should not be taking Wareham seriously at all, which they have no credibility. Everything Rich Robins and Wareham touches turns to shit. Every single time, I go northbound on Horton Street in the morning, there's parking violations of commercial vendors, Rich Robins commercial vendors servicing Wareham projects near the Amtrak station, parking in the bike lanes, blocking the sidewalks, including just this morning. Every time I do it, it's because Mr. Robins didn't want to pay for, you know, that yellow zones, he didn't put into his projects what he needed to do to protect the residents' interests, and so he's just leaving it, it's just his vendors are all just parking, and we're having to pay the price. And so to have him come up here now and say his primary interest here is livability for the residents, that's a scam. We're being scammed. No, the real story here is, he doesn't like city center having, it's going to hurt him and hit him in his pocketbook. It's another, it's more, it's going to lower the rent he can charge for his tenants in his building, because there's more R&amp;D space. He doesn't like the fact that probably he's blocking his view. You know, I hate to side with city center, Public Market, that's where I think he should go with. I think he should, I mean, just because it's the lesser of the two evils. But, you know, Rich Robins should not be taken seriously at all. He's had like 30-plus years of having his way here in Emeryville. It's a terrible legacy with, especially with the former iteration of the city council with Nora Davis as his buddy. And I just don't think that, I think, you know, it's unseemly, I think we should just-
That's your time.
... rule against Wareham. Thank you very much.
Just don't public comment? Just save it.
Everybody wants to follow that?
Okay, the public hearing is closed at 9:35. All right, now I'll open it up for a rebuttal by the applicant, you will have five minutes.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Councilmembers. My name is Aaron Ashley, I'm a partner managing principal of Hart Howerton. We've been at this for a while. You know, over the last nine months, we've spent considerable effort trying to effectively defend the PDP that the Planning Commission enthusiastically endorsed last year. Effectively providing detail to overcome the appellant's just dislike of the look of the building. And presumably, you know, dissatisfaction with the massing of it in light of where he's built, his building, which was approved after the FDP, or the PDP was approved in 2008. Just a few clarifying comments. I think Councilmember Bowders effectively identified that the unprecedented length of the building, you know, we're 107 feet shorter than even the half of the 1,000-foot-long Shellmount building that was referred to in the PDP. Again, you know, whether we debate the Shellmount building really referring just to parcel A as our interpretation and clearly staff's was, or we follow Mr. Francois's version, I think regardless, the total amount of building and, you know, like, building in the way of Mr. Wareham's building between parcel A and parcel B is clearly less than it was in the PDP. Streetscape vitality is a concern of ours. You know, Mark and his partners are in the retail business, it's entirely about streetscape. You don't build streetscape five or eight stories above unless five or eight stories above create bad wind conditions. You create streetscape in that first 20 feet. We spent considerable effort designing the first 20 feet of the building to be the kind of place that you want to shop, the kind of place you want to walk, sidewalks at or exceeding any of the design standards that were put forth by the city ahead of our project. Wind, you know, wind is unmistakable in Emeryville. Every time I'm at the whale with my kids or anywhere around town, you get it, and so it's not news to us. That's why we brought in the best. RWDI does this better than anyone, and they do it with more science than anyone. And so it was important to us, because of how strongly we feel about this, to demonstrate that clearly. You know, I think the appellant's wind consultant, as she noted, is providing advice and has not had the benefit of the kind of wind modeling that our client paid considerable amount of money for. You know, we do think that there's a lot in the PDP that's left up to, you know, interpretation, right? There's a series of illustrations, there's a series of tricky renderings to really interpret, and there's these diagrams which are, you know, labeled illustrative, and so we're left to think of it that way. Nevertheless, our interpretation of it, and yes, there is a diagram that we actually created based on our interpretation of the PDP, so again, if- So again, if you interpreted that there is retail lining, the garage in the PDP, and thus making it opaque to shell-mounted, it's because that's the only way we could tease out the massing and the square footage listed in the PDP and get it to work in the heights that they provided. So our best guess of what the PDP was is it didn't have the benefit of the open garage. So we don't think that the appellant's wind consultant is sort of... Has the full command of what the PDP is showing. We're also just kind of baffled at this contention that Mr. Francois has around the wind comfort issues. If building a building creates less of a wind comfort issue than exists today or existed in the approved PDP, shouldn't we be doing the right thing? And so, and then furthermore, the wind comfort metrics that were provided in our report on Friday, and again, kind of elaborated tonight, don't have the benefit of street trees, street furnishings, retail awnings, all the other things that you do as a matter of course when you get further down the road and design to mitigate wind. So we think that the wind comfort issues will be even less than what were explained today. The narrow gap between the buildings is 58 feet 6 inches. That's between the staircase, so there's another 12 feet to the building mass. Many of the streets, the public streets in San Francisco, have building face to building face. It's substantially less than that. I think you've all been to Chinatown, you've all been around the financial district. So this narrow gap is actually bigger than most streets in San Francisco, so I think narrow gap is not a fair characterization. And lastly, parking. You know, we have very clear understanding of how many retail tenants are in the market today, will be here when the building's finished. Whether the grocery store is leased by a grocery store or a retail tenant, a restaurant or an office user, it will still generate employees. And it doesn't take a food tenant to reiterate that the only way that this place is so popular, whether it's the Whale or the food tenants, that people drive here from all over.
That is your time. Thank you. All right, now we'll have five minutes for rebuttal by the appellant.
So, thank you again, Madam Mayor, Matt Francois, on behalf of Wareham Development. And I'll start where Mr. Robins started, which is, obviously, the proposed alternative is much preferred to the FDP. The applicant has made significant movement with that alternative. We only received it on Friday, so admittedly, we haven't had the benefit of a lot of time to review and consider it. I would note that it is still taller over a longer expanse than the PDP allows, by 65 feet. So in light of that, a modest setback on the north side would help bring that alternative more into conformity with the PDP. And I think if this discussion tonight has indicated anything, we've talked a lot about what are the conditions, what do they say, do they apply to this site or not, it's time now, if you are to embrace that proposed alternative, to be very clear and specific about what conditions of approval will apply to that proposal. We think key ones are that the artwork, which is now supposed to serve as an alternative to the articulation that was referenced in the conditions and the mitigation measures, that that artwork be subject to a public review and comment process, and that this body is the ultimate decision-maker as to whether or not the art has achieved the purpose that you said it was, the articulation and the modulations were supposed to achieve in the building conditions. We think that at least half the art budget, it should be split proportionally between the east and the west elevations and not put completely on Shellmount Street, because the whole purpose of those design conditions was to avoid a blank wall. We also think that landscaped area on the southern portion that's shown in the plans, that that should be publicly accessible, similar to the way that Emery Station West Terrace is publicly accessible. And we also think it's vitally important that this body, the city, retain its own consultant to do a wind study, to peer review the study that RWDI did, to confirm that they actually measured things correctly against the PDP, and that it satisfies you before that's finally Finally, I would point out that in terms of additional conditions, which we think it's important, that if you are to embrace the proposed alternative, that are made clear is that the trash and recycling facilities, which are now shown as outside the building and in direct viewshed and sight of the Emery Station Terrace, public terrace, that those be brought within the building, as is typical for any large building in Emeryville. So, we appreciate and acknowledge, it wasn't made completely clear that they're proposing to revise it, and that's why you got the presentation you got. And now I'm here to talk about the alternative, and if that was something that you were to propose or adopt, we think that these extra conditions should be added to that, that it requires a little bit more thought and review, including an independent wind study retained by the city to tell you what the impacts are, and that you have the final say over the artwork that is proposed as a pretty major substitution to what were the articulation and design conditions. I'm happy to answer any final questions.
Thank you. All right. Any council clarifying questions for any party? All right. I have a couple, actually, for the appellant. If you'd come on up. Sorry, applicant. Why are those words so similar for this? It's really annoying. In your alternate version, it did mark that there would be council cooperation in determining the art. Would you be open to having the council having a final vote out of a pre-selected group of art options for this building?
Yes, we would. The way the program works right now is that we work with the Art Committee, and then we go ahead and we pick... Right now, we pick like seven finalists. We commission them to put together proposals, and they would be very comfortable in having the city council decide who the winner was.
Okay. Thank you so much. Yes, Member Donahue.
In relation to that, Mark, open garages like this are really ugly. Artwork can really mitigate that very well, but it can also do something, it can be like natural vegetation for reducing wind. Would you be willing to offer technical advice to the artists so that they could work with the ratios of airflow that you really enable your artists to recognize the design reality is that they have to have a certain amount of airflow going through the garage for it to be safe?
We'd certainly be willing to do that.
Okay.
Thank you. All right. There's no other clarifying questions, so I'm going to open this up for deliberation and action. Member Martinez, would you like to start us off?
Excuse me. I want to thank the developer for coming through with thoughtful modifications to the project, and I think that the modifications presented in the submission that we got last week represent a lot of work and consideration of all the concerns that I've heard expressed. So I would like to see a path to move us forward, supporting that proposed proposal.
Thank you. Member Donahue.
I prefer the alternative design, too. From our public deck across the tracks, there will be a better view corridor looking towards the northwest. And the appellant had a couple of suggestions that were kind of nice about having that plaza that they now have designed be open to the public. That would be great if that were the case. And, you know, the other idea of not having the trash dumpsters just visible to the street walking along Shellmount Street.
So close.
So, those were great suggestions. And I think this new design bodes well for our city.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Pats.
I have lots of thoughts on this. I think the most salient thing said is it's a legacy building. We don't give enough thought to how long these things are in place. That said, this is a process. And for me, while I appreciate the efforts in the alternative building, the FDP has been vetted and vetted again. And so the question to us today is, were those findings of that submitted and approved at least twice findings based on... Were they made correctly, I guess is the way I'll say it? That's... And for us at this late hour to switch it out and say, "Oh, we're going to go to this building," seems to me like we're going all the way back to the beginning, because that should go back to the Planning Commission. That said, I feel that the wind study, the other testimony today, I don't find any fault with what the Planning Commission did. I feel like they made findings. I think their findings were consistent with the plans, and therefore I support the FDP.
Thank you. Member Bowders.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. On the issue of the matters on the appeal, I ultimately am satisfied with the applicant on the wind issue and the wind study. But I agree with the appellant on their argument that they brought to us about articulation. I feel that the applicant has addressed that with the revised proposal. And so I believe that of the options before us, under standard of review, Emeryville Municipal Code 9-7.1405-D, I believe the right option, in my opinion, with a few add-ons, which I'll mention here, I think the right option is option one, which is to continue the matter and request a supplemental report from the Planning Commission. And I believe that we should ask the Planning Commission to do the following things. I think we should ask them to review Exhibit 146, which is the proposed alternative plan that was submitted to the city, and turn that in as an FDP, and then work with the Planning Department to ensure, to... Vice Mayor Pats is a good point, why are we hitting reset? But if this is seriously, as I heard you say at the beginning, willing to be submitted as an FDP, I'm willing to support that as an FDP. I'm not willing to support your current FDP, because I think it fails for the articulation reason raised by Wareham. But this submittal, I think, does meet that requirement. And if you submit that document, along with whatever else the Planning Department would require to have a full FDP in front of the Planning Commission, as well as two other items, I agree with the prior comments by my colleagues about a condition of approval for any art that would be approved to come back to us prior to a building permit being issued. So you can go through the process, you had planned, bring maybe the top three choices that come out of that process, and the council can review that. And I also... There's something that wasn't done in the wind study that I noticed, which is there was no wind study done, analysis done, of this proposed alternative plan for the roof deck area on the parking garage. That is not studied anywhere. And so I do think there is a deficiency there. And so what I would like to ask is that an existing requirement that arguably applies only to the Shellmount Site building, and I agree to the extent that there is some ambiguity between the original PDP and then the revised marketplace plan as to what building is being discussed, but I don't agree with council that it is abundantly clear that A and B are supposed to be considered the same. I think there's enough supporting language that supports their argument that it's a contextually building A. So, but I do think there is something that I don't want to leave ambiguous, which is under Exhibit 13, there are conditions that were intended for building A. And one of them is under section Roman numeral three, large letter A, number three, C, there's a provision that says, "The final design of the roof deck," and it's referring to building A, "but the final design of the roof deck, open spaces, terraces on the Shellmount building shall be heavily landscaped to reduce wind and improve usability, and shall incorporate porous materials and structures, vegetation, screens or lattice work if preferred, which offer superior wind shelter compared to solid surfaces. Outdoor furnishings such as tables shall be either weighted or attached." I believe that the design that's submitted for the FDP for that space needs to comply with this provision, even though in the original EIR and PDP, it was designed for building A. Since you're putting a roof deck space on that building, and you have not performed a wind study on that space, I don't have any interest in having basically the top of a parking garage that is this barren cold space that is visible to everybody who works across the train tracks. So I think that you've made a lot of very significant improvements with this proposed alternative, but I think that will be, for me, a condition I'd ask my colleagues to support, so that it's a usable space. Those are my comments.
Thank you. You know, I obviously thought that the concerns of remassing, articulation, wind, and parking were adequate to warrant a hearing here tonight, and we have the options before us. I believe the applicant has really listened to the council, the community, and the Planning Commission, and addressed those concerns with this alternate design. To answer your question, yeah, I prefer the alternate design quite clearly. I'm interested in hearing from staff what the exact difference between having it go back to Planning Commission would be in terms of steps, or having this go to another public hearing with direction to review it at council again. Is it just going to Planning Commission, then it would come back here? Are there any additional steps?
I think that's right. I mean, it's what it says on the bottom of the screen there. You may continue the hearing and request a supplemental report from the Planning Commission. One thing I want to emphasize is that I don't believe what you're requesting is that we start over again with a new FDP application. So we're not going to go through the full-blown FDP approval process again. Rather, we would refer this back, you would refer this back to the Planning Commission for their advice, which would be similar to their review and recommendation on an FDP. And they would give you their best recommendation as to what they think you should do with this alternative design.
And Madam Mayor, the only difference really is procedurally in terms of timing. If you do, as Councilmember Bowders articulated, go with option one, which is to request the supplemental report from the Planning Commission, then you would extend the time for the final decision by the council by 30 days. So if you didn't take that step, the final decision would have to be made 60 days after the closure of the public hearing. If you do request that supplemental report from the Planning Commission, then you extend that time by 30 days.
Thank you. I'm open to sending it to the Planning Commission. I do want to move forward with the alternate design one way or the other. So if there's a motion, I'd support it.
Well, were there other items that people felt strongly about? Did you have something? You had... No?
I did think that terrace accessibility, after looking at what the wind conditions are on the terrace, would be something very interesting to look at, especially considering how many people go get lunch at the public market across the street and might want to enjoy it on that rooftop area. And also curious to see what could be done with the trash recycling zone. I agree with Scott on that.
Okay. Do you agree with the other things that I raised, or do people have questions or issues with those?
I have no issues with them.
No, I agree with them.
Willing to try to make a motion. So I'll make a motion that this matter pursuant to Emeryville Municipal Code, Section 9-7.1405-D1, be continued for the purpose of sending to the Planning Commission to develop a supplemental report, which will include at a minimum the following. It will include administrative record Exhibit 146 as a baseline document for the FDP. In other words, you can't change it away from what we just spent four hours talking about. And that any other documents required for it to basically have the necessary components of an FDP as required by staff will be submitted with that submission. Additionally, there will be a condition of approval for the project that will require that the roof deck comply with administrative record Exhibit 13, Roman numeral three, A3C, as it relates to roof decks. There will be an additional condition of approval that will add a requirement that the City Council shall review any final art for the exterior of parcel B prior to the FDP receiving a building permit, which does not need to be done concurrent to the time for the Planning Commission review. That the Planning Commission will examine in the course of their review, public access to the roof deck space, and that they also are asked to examine and make recommendations related to trash enclosures and internalizing them to the parking structure. Have I captured everything that people wanted?
Yes.
That's my motion.
Yeah, I second it.
All right, we've got a motion from Member Bowders and a second from Member Donahue.
Councilmember Bowders?
Aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue.
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pats.
Aye.
And Mayor Medina.
Aye.
Mayor Medina, if I may, just on the timing of this.
Yes.
I think we've figured out that in order to meet that time limit that the city manager mentioned, we will need to bring this back to you, uh, before the first meeting in February, which would mean your January-
The January 21st regular meeting of the council.
Right.
Would be the opportunity.
Which would mean we will have to take this to the Planning Commission, probably at a special meeting, to be scheduled either in December or January.
Okay. Thank you. All right, we have no action items. Department head reports. Back to you.
That would be me. The Planning Commission, speaking of which, had a meeting on October 21st, 24th, sorry. Uh, there were three items listed on the agenda. One was the, uh, public hearing on the elimination of the minimum parking requirements. That item was continued to a future meeting, uh, pending resolution of the sequo determination for that proposal. There were two study sessions. One was on the 47th Street Homes, uh, which is a proposal to demolish four existing houses and replace them with three duplexes for a total of six new units. Uh, there were a number of speakers at that study session. Most of them were concerned about tenant landlord issues. I would note that because that project involves demolition of existing residential units, it requires City Council approval ultimately, and, uh, we have tentatively scheduled a study session on that project before the City Council on your January 21st meeting, although in light of the direction you just gave us, that may not happen. Um, and finally, they had another study session on a second-story addition to a house which is right across the street from the 47th Street Homes project. Uh, there were a few speakers there, and they're mostly in support of the project, and that project does not require City Council approval. It will be coming back to the Planning Commission at a future meeting for consideration of approval. And that concludes my report. I'd be happy to respond to any questions.
Questions?
And Madam Mayor, on behalf of the Public Works Department, um, the Greenway Crossings were almost completed, um, a couple of different treatments that we'll be putting on 65th. The methacrylate, Mike Roberts' favorite word, um, project for the Powell Street Bridge will be starting on the 12th of November. We'll be doing everything we can to finish that expeditiously. Um, the stoplights, um, at Doyle and Powell and 40th and Harlan, um, you will note that at the, the Doyle Street stoplight, we've had to bulb out the crosswalk a little bit more than anticipated, so that is a little bit of a change, but we think that's positive. So all three of those projects are, um, underway or almost underway, so lots going on in Public Works land.
And to clarify, because I got this at BPAC, but other people might hear from community members about it, the, um, speed table at 65th Street ended up being a little bit shorter than we anticipated, so there's going to be speed cushions on either side to rectify that, right?
Correct.
Okay, just in case anyone says, "That looks flat," because I've already gotten it on Twitter.
Due to the crown, it's due to the crown of the street.
Yes.
But we were able to achieve the objective at the other intersection, so hopefully that'll continue.
So there will be speed cushions or pillows, whatever he called them, placed on either side?
Yes.
It's like little bumpy things to slow it down. It's, Robert's happy with it.
Okay.
They're good. Okay, just wanted to clarify that since we will get-
I haven't got that update yet.
-comments about it looking flat. Thank you. Um, any agenda item requests from council members? I have one.
I have one. Did, I, I'm just checking, because I, I, the person I'm caucusing with couldn't remember if I had asked this or not. Did, um, we previously asked with the upcoming facade grant about a facade grant, um, a rebate program? He's gone. For a future agenda item, so the, or not facade, I'm so sorry, not facade grant, the cabaret license, I'm so sorry, not facade grant. So the cabaret licenses that we do annually, um, I wanted to propose that for small businesses as one of the ways we could be assisting them, um, in fulfilling the missions we have. There are a handful, with, with related to labor and pay, um, ordinances in the city, there are a handful of them that are small businesses that apply for cabaret licenses, which boosts, um, people coming out for live music and other things, um, and I, and jazz on the patio side, kind of thing. And I just think, um, we don't have a full uptake of businesses that, small businesses that utilize the business license rebate that we offer them, and so we could have a small rebate for businesses that are trying to bring more people out with live music, which would be great for the city anyways culturally and socially. And so, um, it wouldn't be, I don't think it'd be really hard to craft something, but I, I know that we're going to be issuing cabaret licenses in December when we have those normal renewal votes, so I was wondering if we could put a, a program in place, um, that would just basically allow us to have a, a straight-up rebate if, if, if we wanted to do that for small businesses.
So this is a scheduling item. Um, so I, I will request additional time. I don't think that staff can create a program and have it approved by the council and have it all done before the end of December.
No, 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 no. I'm not asking for that.
But we could do that in such a way that, you know, we'll, we can bring something back after the first of the year.
Yeah, that's, that's all I'm asking. I'm not by any means asking for anything by December, trust me.
Okay.
Um, I would like to request an item to discuss short-term infrastructural improvements and enforcement for bike and pedestrian safety in high-risk corridors.
Support.
Support.
Could you restate it again? I didn't get it. Short-term?
Um, I would like, an item to address bicycle and pedestrian safety, including short-term infrastructure improvements and enforcement actions.
Do you want a study session, or you like have a specific item?
I think we might want to have an action item for it. Yeah. Fine, I want to declare state of emergency for bike and pedestrian safety.
You gotta come up with a good acronym, like Berkeley.
We will put on that.
I'll work on that.
Can the Transportation and Public Works Committee take this on? Just authorize us to, to put something for the agenda? Does she, how, how quickly can we do that?
Well, if I could just ask, Madam Mayor, are you, are you asking for an action item to, to do what?
Um, to create specific timeframes and goals for the city to address public safety hazards to the bike and, uh, for bikes and pedestrians.
So maybe what we could do is put an item on and have the council discuss that and further articulate what that would look like?
Yes.
And then we could come back with the, the, the more articulated version of that?
Mm-hmm.
Couple, couple phases?
Yes.
Okay, got it.
Haven't thought of my acronym yet. I'll get there. Apparently there's law about actual states of emergency, so we'll just say state of emergency.
That has legal implications.
I know that's true.
So we might want to think of a different term for purposes of the initial agenda item.
Yeah.
All right.
State of immediate action, go with that.
I was going with state of strong concern.
Ooh. Okay.
Should have a secret ballot.
Any additional? Okay, that's it?
I will be, uh, phoning or videoing into the next meeting. That's not why. Yes, I won't tell you where from, you'll see it on the agenda, I may, I may not, uh, have a cocktail.
Oh dear, okay, so, uh, then this meeting is-
What do you think, some of this terrain?
What's that?
That's kind of a-